That sounds good. Okay, great.
Thank you. Thank you, Tech.
Thank you, Tech. Good evening, everybody. This is the Needham Zoning Board, the November 20th meeting. Nice to be here with everybody and our distinguished zoning panel. Before we get into the agenda, and it's an active one tonight, I would entertain a motion from the board regarding the minutes from last meeting.
Motion on board to approve the minutes.
Okay, all in favor of approval of the minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the minutes were approved. Thank you for that judicious handling of the minutes. Okay, 737 Mosley Avenue, the Saybrook Construction LLC Seeking a Variance. George, Mr. Gunten, good evening, and your client, good evening.
Good evening.
So, George, I thought there was a request to postpone tonight?
So, it's a little convoluted, but it's a partial kind of request to continue.
Okay.
Continued request to continue. So, the last month's hearing, we requested to continue. Nothing was discussed at all, it was just to continue, because prior to that, we had made some changes to the plans, but we were trying to connect with the neighborhood to review the plans with the neighborhood.
Yes.
Have some discussions.
Yes.
So, we have since had, my clients had some discussions with the neighborhood since then. That resulted in further revisions to the plans. Those revised plans were submitted last week, but obviously, that's like, you know, almost 11th hour, so it's close to tonight. So, you should have a letter outlining the changes, and as a part of that letter, I did ask for an extension of the action deadline, just because I anticipate that the board will want to further continue to allow departments to comment and maybe give the neighborhood a chance to comment and so on. So, I don't know if the board wants to actually get in, how far the board wants to get into the substantive tonight.
Well, you know, George, I think that, I appreciate the candor and I appreciate the working with the neighbors, and I'm not sure if the neighbor's in the room tonight. Okay, thank you all for attending. What I think makes the most sense, that these plans are being reviewed by various boards, and I know there's some nuances. I do appreciate, I recall seeing some plans, I'm not sure if the old ones or the new ones, where you, there was some redlining to distinguish. Has that changed?
That's the old ones, yes.
Okay. So, this would be very helpful, I think, to all of us on the board, to update this plot plan that is color-coded, to show the original plan of what you can do as a right, and various changes as is appropriate. I understand you're trying to, there's a deck in the back, there's a little bit of setback in the front, and some other changes, all in an effort to work with the neighbors to get something that is reasonably suitable. So, as that being said, George, so I guess we would probably like to hear all this at one time at the next meeting.
Okay.
And may I ask the next meeting, please, the date?
That would be in December, and on your agenda, it's December 19th.
Okay. All right, George, so that you're seeking to continue it to the next meeting, which is December 19th?
Right, sure.
Okay.
But, Mr. Chair, there's also a request to extend the date, so I think that would be very important, especially-
I was about to get to that. So, that, so now that we have the date of December 19th, George, as has been indicated that we have deadlines to adhere to, that we must act within timeframes, so therefore, you're agreeing, as the applicant, to extend the date for the board to vote, and when would that extension be?
The extension that's being requested is to January 31st. That would be the date in which we would need to file the decision with the town clerk.
Okay, so file on the 31st. What would be the date when the decision has to be made? Looking at your, so 14 days prior.
December would be, because the meeting in January could possibly be in January, January 23rd, we may need to change that meeting, so I really think that, you know, we really should be in good shape. George?
Yeah, I would hope that we'd be able to wrap it up at the December meeting, and if by chance we can't, if we need to extend it further, we'll certainly ask to extend the action deadline further as well.
All right. So, if I understand the rules regarding the applicant's willingness to extend these dates from which the board must act, that, so the board must act 14 days prior to the 31st, which is the 21st, if I did my math right, to the 11th. So, it seems like that the board must make a decision by the 11th, and have a written decision filed by the 31st. Is that your understanding?
Technically, yes.
Okay.
Although I think if the board didn't at least vote a decision at the December hearing, we probably would be extending anyways. So, if you voted a decision at the December hearing, based on the board's practice for the last year or two, decision would likely be sometime around about the date that you mentioned, that's at least 14 days prior to the 31st, so that it all sort of syncs together.
All right.
Daphne, do you?
I'll have to really look at this carefully. I normally look at the candle, the dates and everything, but we're talking about the 31st of January, right? That extension.
Right, all right. So, let me just be clear, just to summarize and get your affirmation. Thank you, everyone, for participating and giving us some guidance. So, that the board, the applicant is agreeing that the board has until the January 11th to make its decision, and by the January 31st to file a decision with the town clerk. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, we look forward to seeing all of you here next meeting, on the 19th, and I appreciate the cooperation. I'm sure you'll continue to do that, and we'll certainly get the reasoned opinions of various town agencies on your changes. So, thank you so much.
But, Mr. Chair, please, would you please vote on the item that's, regarding, asking for an extension, we'll need a vote on this, regarding, you know, getting a vote from the board, that they agree to extend the action deadline to January 31st of 2025. That's extending, I think that that would be good to have it in place.
Sure. So, just to be clear, I thought I said that. I thought, and I say it again, that the applicant is agreeing-
But you still would need a vote from the board on that.
Okay, all right. So, that the applicant has assented to board action by the 11th, board decision filed with the town clerk by the 31st, and may I get a motion from the board to approve that?
I'll raise the motion.
Okay, you're second to that.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, the board is approving that as well?
The extension to the 31st of January, correct? Is that, that's the request?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, 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 yes.
Because I hear the January 11th, and we're not meeting on January 11th, so I'm just getting very concerned about that.
So, I'm going to say it again for the third, for the third time. There's been agreement by the applicant to defer the board's decision until the 11th, and that there's been agreement by the applicant to have a written decision filed with the town clerk by January 31st, 2025. The board has seconded and presented that motion. I think we're all set. Is there something that you wanted to clarify further?
Basically, it's just asking for an extension, an extension of the action deadlines to January 31st, and then that way, it's open, so that's the date. Giving this January 11th, there's another, January 31st will work, so-
Daphne, you're confusing me, and I don't think, I don't think we need to.
All right.
I think we understand it, I think we voted on it.
Good.
And I think, I think, we've said it three times now, so I think we're certain there. I appreciate the candid, okay. So, that's good. There's a question, please, thank you. Please. Yes, for the micro, so, just so you know, that we're taping this not to amplify it, but rather for people in the outside world to have a record, so that's why we asked you to come to the microphone here, if you can identify yourself, please.
Good evening. Anna Geraldo Kerr, 42 Mosley Avenue. My property is right across 37 Mosley. The only, I appreciate the process, and for us, as butters, we are trying to follow along. My question to the chair is, is there, if there are going to be any more changes to plans or to any documentation that is going to be updated, if it could be possible to get it ahead of time, and not just a few days ahead?
That's a fair question. So, let me direct that question over to counsel.
Yeah, absolutely. That's, and in fact, that's partly why we're continuing to December, to give adequate time. I think most, if not all, the neighborhood had the plans actually around about, or just prior to when they were submitted to the town, these last revisions, but in any event, certainly, the neighborhood, like the town, should have ample time to review.
And can I ask the chair, what would you consider ample time? A week, two weeks?
So, George, there seems to be a little sentiment they're getting the plans too late, and that sounds like they're working, but, so let's see if we can come up with some agreement, two weeks in advance?
I think two weeks is reasonable, yeah.
Okay, does that sound reasonable?
Yes. The reason I'm asking is because, once we get the plans, we, as neighborhood, would like to review them, and then have enough time to meet with the applicant.
Absolutely.
So, we're trying to expedite it.
So, even closer to three weeks, George, I think would allow reasonable feedback. I think there's a good number of residents, butters, who are concerned, as you know, as well as I. And so, the quicker you get them the plans, the more they'll have a chance to react, and you'll have a chance to respond to that.
So, generally speaking, I always try and get plans out as soon as I, as soon as they come to me, or as soon as they're done by the surveyors and architects, and I will continue that, and, you know, if that means less than two weeks, then certainly, like tonight, I personally don't have any issue in further extending to give ample time, because the point is, the whole point of the process is to give the town and the neighbors time to review everything.
So, when you transfer these plans, are these electronic or hard copy plans?
Both, both.
Well, they need to be synchronized. That is extremely important, and always to notify staff ahead of time, not to a third party.
So, what are you saying that?
No, I'm just making it, I think, I think both the applicant and will understand what I mean.
Daphne, just correct me if I'm wrong, our December date is December 19th?
Correct.
And the submission date for all materials is this Friday, correct? 22nd, according to what I have here. So theoretically, the neighbor should be able to get everything from applicant.
We all know, we're not going to be getting anything different than what's already been submitted.
I don't expect so, unless there's any further discussions with the neighborhood that results in any further changes, but I don't believe that there would be anything.
To answer your concerns a little bit, Chair, it sounds like the applicant had some type of meetings with the neighbors.
One meeting.
Whatever it might be. But it sounds like that work is still progressing, which is why they requested continuance, so I don't think anything is going to be sprung upon you. While I can tell you right now with certainty, we're not going to vote on anything without the support, without knowing that the process is continued and that you guys are involved. So, I think you don't need to be concerned about any more last-minute changes or anything else. I think counsel for the applicant is telling you that he's got, that these plans are here, and I don't see any further changes to be voted on in December. I think that any further changes will lead to more delays, so I think the process between the applicant and you guys needs to continue, whether it's continued to your satisfaction or not, I can't speak to, but I think that what you, what you've had now, if there's continued discussion, that will lead to other delays, is in short, what everybody hears right now.
Thank you. And the other piece of that puzzle is being able to have some kind of communication and proactively pursue the meeting. So, that's something that I'm just putting out there, that we are looking to engage, but sometimes it's difficult.
So, George, I think we're hearing that they want to hear more from you, and have more meetings and get these plans sooner. Do you have the new plans now?
Yeah, we received the-
Okay. So, those are the most recent plans, those are the ones the town are reviewing?
But there was a revised agenda that just happened a few days ago, so we had to go and look at what was revised.
Okay, guys, so-
Yeah, I posted on Monday.
So, I think the message is that, George, maybe if I would suggest after, this is over this meeting, of course, you have another case perhaps, but that there be communication now, take advantage, if there's a room in this building, perhaps you can use, spend a few minutes or not, but any event. So, we do have a busy night, I know you're, you've got plans as well, so thank you so much, thank you for your input, and let's move on to the next case if we could. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Which case?
That's the one we just voted on.
Okay. All right. So, good evening. The next case on the agenda, good evening, folks, I'll let you quickly get out, allow the next group, 75 Charles Street?
77.
I'm sorry, 77 Charles Street, Elmo Fuddberger LLC. It's request for a special permit to allow the use of an indoor athletic or exercise facility under section 3662, and to waive strict adherence to the number of required parking, the parking plan and design requirements under the 5115, and other applicable sections regarding the boot camp, the Burn Boot Camp, located in the mixed-use district of MU 128. Good evening, good evening, everybody, that's the C. Wall. Okay, George, the floor is yours.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. George Sinta Jr. appearing tonight on behalf of the applicant, and with me are the two real people in interest behind Elmo Fuddberger, Christine D'Amico and, sorry, I don't really-
Alexis.
Alexis, all right, thank you. All right. So, as indicated, this is an application for special permits for a Burn Boot Camp location. The property is identified as partial 33 on Assessor's Map Number 74. It is in the mixed-use 128 zoning district, which is one of the specialized zoning districts that were created several years ago on the other side of 128. It has, the property is an interesting property, has frontage on both Charles Street and on Wexford Street, so it's actually a long piece that's located between the two streets. It has just over 253 feet of frontage on Charles Street, and almost 196 feet of frontage on Wexford Road. The lot itself contains 46,647 square feet of area, and it is currently occupied by an existing one-story commercial building that has approximately 20,104 square feet of space inside of it. The building was built back in 1964, when that area was much the same as it is today, under Building Permit Number 5660. All this is in the memo that you should have. The building is currently occupied by a handful of different tenants. On the Charles Street side, there is a business that does sort of medical equipment and things like that, known as G Medical, and also as pharmaceutics. On the other side of the building, on the Wexford Road side of the building, there is Golf Tech, which is a retail golf store. I'm not a golfer, so I can't tell you all the things in there, but I'm sure somebody on the board might be. On that side also is Pure Performance Training, which is a different type of indoor athletic and exercise facility, that was actually permitted by the Board of Appeals back, I'm sorry, by the Planning Board, back in 2012. And then last, back on the Charles Street side of the building, is a business called Fast Splits, which is an interesting business, it's, a chunk of it is retail sales of bicycles and similar equipment. They also have a little side thing, they also do classes and instructional training as well, which is relevant when we get down to the parking, which is towards the end of my presentation. So, the space that we're going to be discussing tonight is the majority of the current fast split space. It includes approximately 4,600 square feet of area, and that leaves 1,251 square feet of fast split space. That leftover space, which is located at the back of the fast splits operation, is going to be retained by the landlord, and it'll be used primarily for office and storage purposes. For purposes of this application, I've designated it for parking as office, because that's the more conservative approach, and because, as you'll see when we get to those numbers, it's justified based on the active and actual uses of the property. All right. So, Christine started her Burn Boot Camp franchise in, back in 2018. For those of you who are not familiar with Burn Boot Camp, Burn Boot Camp goes all the way back to 2012, when it was started in North Carolina. Basically, a gentleman who was doing fitness classes, I believe outside in the parking lot, developed this program, and it just snowballed, and has turned into this phenomenon that has over 400 locations in over 38 states right now. So, this is a bona fide, strong business model that does very well. And since 2018, it's done very well on Needham Street in Newton, so it's actually just over the line, just down the street from this location. The proposal is basically to move it from Needham Street, which is, as we all know, has been busy for the last umpteen years, and is just getting busier, to this location, which is a little bit of a better location for them. The focus of the Burn Boot Camp is not just exercise and fitness, but also on community. So, as a part of that, one side thing is they offer free daycare services during the sessions for people attending the sessions. As a part of that, they also focus primarily on women, although men are not prohibited, but it's primarily a women-oriented fitness activity. There will be a maximum of 45 clients on site at any given time, with a maximum of four staff, and the hours of operation will range from 5:15 a.m. to 10:30 a.m., so it's open in the morning for a chunk, then it breaks, and then from 4 o'clock to 7:30 in the afternoon, Monday to Friday. Saturday is from 7:00 to 11:00 a.m. So, with that in mind, you can already kind of see where the peak times are, and even more than that, really, the peak time is within the 5:30 to kind of 7, 7:30 range in the morning. And this is part why we think-
George, I hate to interrupt, can you just repeat the, those hours of operation?
Sure. It's, so it's 5:15 a.m. to 10:30 a.m., Monday to Friday, and then again, 4 p.m. to 7:30 p.m., Monday to Friday, and then 7 a.m. to 11 a.m. on Saturdays. It's closed on Sundays. And all this is also in the memo as well.
So, that the request is to those specific hours?
Well, I would, I would ask for, you know, a little bit of a cushion on either side, just to, just to make sure that there's enough time for employees to be able to get in, do any setup they need to do, anything like that, but those are the operating hours. Yes. All right.
National change.
No, it'll be on that. All right, so, right, so the, so the peak time, really, the core, strong peak, is the 5:15 a.m. to 7:30 a.m. time slot. All right? So, let me talk about the parking, and why that is significant for parking. So, the bylaw has a requirement for indoor athletic or exercise facilities of one parking space for every 150 square feet of space. It's actually one of the most restrictive or most intense parking demands we have in the bylaw. When you do that calculation, at 4,600 square feet, this space would require 31 base parking spaces, 30.66 rounded up is 31. In addition, you're required to provide one parking space for every three staff, and where this will have a maximum of four, that means we have to have two parking spaces for staff. So, 31 plus two is 33 parking spaces is the total parking demand that's allocated to this use under the zoning bylaw. When you, when you, when you add that into the existing uses in the building, and you take into account the retained space that the landlord is going to use from fast splits, if you do that as office, you wind up with a total of 104 parking spaces, which sounds like an awful lot, and it certainly does sound like an awful lot compared to the fact that there's 62 parking spaces on site. So, there's a significant shortfall on paper. However, this is one of those situations where the real meat's in the details, because even though on paper, there is a large number of spaces apparently required, in practice, nothing near that number of spaces is actually required. And I will say that the landlord, who has a lot of experience with managing buildings with multiple tenants, has done a real good job building out the mixed uses in the building and managing them, so that the parking lot works for everybody. And I, and I do sort of in the back of my head take note that if this landlord feels that this use is compatible, that means something in this instance. But I see why they would feel that it means something, because when you work through the hours of the various tenants in the building, and you work through the number of employees and staff that they have, and how many spaces they need, you wind up with really a ton of spaces available on site. And so, let's kind of talk about that. So, I mentioned that the real peak for this use is between 5:15 and 7, 7:30, right? So, between 5:15 and 7 a.m., this would be the only activity, the only business open in the building. There's no other business that opens that early in the building. The only other building, the only other business that comes close is G Medical, I'm sorry, Pure Performance, which opens at 6 a.m., and then G Medical opens at 7. So, already, the peak time being really early in the morning is when there's nobody else there in the building, so there's, all the spaces are pretty much available. And then Golf Tech doesn't open until 9 o'clock, and 9 o'clock, you're already sort of getting into the trailing end of the demand for this use. In the afternoon, all these, all the businesses are open, but the actual use of spaces is still not significant that it, that it would cause a problem. So, the landlord reached out to all the different tenants, and they communicated back how many spaces they currently use on average, and here's what they said. Golf Tech-
Is this Exhibit B to your memo? Exhibit A?
Well, so, that, this is covered in the memo, but it's not in the exhibit. The exhibit is the parking counts, which I'll get to last. So, when asked with respect to their number of spaces that they actually use, Golf Tech reported that between the hours of 7 and 10 a.m., secretly the beginning of the day when they first opened, they only use, they only use about four spaces. G Medical indicated they also only use about four spaces. And Pure Performance, which had a massive parking count under the decision from the Planning Board, they indicated that they only use six to eight spaces. The result is that all the existing tenants in the building report collectively that they only use approximately 16 spaces during the morning area, during the morning hours. In the afternoon, that count goes up a bit, to a total of approximately 20 spaces. As I mentioned previously, there's, there's 62 spaces on site, so 18 and 20 still leaves a tremendous amount of spaces available. Now, you all may be saying, well, that's all well and good, but how do we know? Just because the tenant says that this is what they use, how do we know this is actually it? So, the landlord went out and did some parking counts, and that is that exhibit to the memo. They basically went out over a course of three days, a Tuesday, a Wednesday, and a Thursday, and they did a series of parking counts over the course of each day. What they found was that basically the maximum or peak parking demand over the course of those three days was, was on the Tuesday at 9 a.m. and 10 a.m., with a grand total of 19 cars in the parking lot. So, notice that 19 is only three more than what the tenants themselves reported, at 16. So, it is consistent, there is a consistency there, so I think you can take the tenant numbers as legitimate and realistic. All right? So, on the day when there was, on that two hours when there was the peak parking demand in the lot, there were still 43 parking spaces available. So, based on this, based on the different hours of operation, the fact that these tenants, while on paper, they would seem to require a lot of spaces, they actually only require a fraction of that, this is a good use to fit into this building, and the parking waiver is justified.
Can you tell us a little bit about the concept of exercise, the franchise, the general nature of the exercise?
Sure, yeah, so we are a group exercise-
And your name, please?
My name is Alexis Gates, I'm one of the franchise partners for Elmo Fuddberger. We have, so, Burn Boot Camp is a group exercise space where people come together for what we designate as assigned camp times, where there is one trainer leading a group exercise. So, we go through, you know, different uses of equipment, different types of exercise. We'll have, you know, different stations as we go through, kind of utilizing all of this space within the gym itself. Some of our core values, along with, you know, exercising our community, it's really important to us, so empowering not only women, but everybody who walks through our doors to always leave feeling better than they did when they came in.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So, so it's a fantastic business, it's done well both locally and nationally, it's a business that is a real asset to the community, and this is a good location for this business, it will mix well with the other tenants in the building, and will be a good tenant in that area generally. So, we'd asked that the board approve, there's, there are multiple special permits that are required, and one is a special permit for the use, one is a special permit waiving strict adherence with the number of parking spaces required, and then last is a waiver from the parking requirements with respect to the design of the parking lot. The parking lot, which was installed in the 60s when the building was built, does not comply with any of the current design requirements that were instituted in the 80s, which is what you would expect. So, as a result, we need a waiver for that. Nothing is being proposed to change the parking lot, anyway.
Might you just quickly summarize what those design waivers look like, originally?
Sure, sure. So, the one, which is one of the most common design waiver, is lighting, you know, the bylaw requires one-foot candle for every inch of the parking lot, and it doesn't likely need that. doesn't likely meet that. Parking space size, these are older spaces, some might meet the current width, some might not, some might meet the length, some might not. Layout with respect to the location of the spaces and how they're accessed. Maneuvering aisle width, one of the maneuvering, at least one of the maneuvering aisles I measured was a little bit less than the, the current requirement. Landscaping, in a parking lot of this size, the bylaw currently requires a certain amount of interior landscaping inside the parking lot, which, there is no landscaping inside the parking lot here. Number of trees, if you have a parking lot over a certain size, you're supposed to put them, you're supposed to put trees, one for every 10 spaces inside the parking lot. Again, there's none here. And then the last one is bicycle racks. You're supposed to have bicycle racks if you have a parking lot of a certain size.
So let's talk about that. Two things stand out. One is the bicycle rack. Doesn't seem like it's a tremendous amount of effort. The second, obviously, the inquiries regarding handicap spaces.
Yeah. So, so there is handicap space. This, this site does have, because of the, and because of the size of the parking lot, it has to have handicap space. Only really small parking lots can avoid that.
And how many are there, George?
There are, I believe there are two.
So you're not changing that. So what about the bike rack? Seems to be more and more people, especially around 128th, there's all kind of access bike lanes. Why, why wouldn't it be appropriate to get a, a bike rack in there?
I'm, I'm not sure. Look, just looking at the site plan, I'm not sure if there actually is a good location to fit a bike rack in.
Really? So let's take a look at the plan together. So it's, as you say, a fairly large parking facility, 62 spaces. It's hard to believe you can't angle a, a bike rack in there somewhere. And often, bike racks are closest to the, near the door, for example. So I'm looking at the, this is on, so, yeah. So that, I mean, I'm just thinking out loud, but that, that would seem to be a practical sense. Needham is gearing up. They've altered the roads for these bike lanes, and you're dealing with athletic people, men and women, that may want to take a bike there. So what can we do here?
So I, I, you know, I really say, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the site plan, and I do not see really spots that would, that would easily accommodate. But then I also, I'm not sure, you know, I, I would want to have input from the landlord on this as well.
So let's do this. So it seems like you're saying, according to the self-counted parking spaces and then the self-reporting, it says excess parking spaces, right? Did I understand that right?
Well, they're, right. Well, there's-
Demand at 140, but you told us why it's a much smaller demand. You've got 62 on the space. Seems to me a, a small bike rack to accommodate would make a lot of sense here. And I, it's appropriate. You need time to think about it a little bit. So we don't want to alter or tie this up with the continuance, but what can we suggest here tonight? What might you suggest tonight that, that might get a, a, a bike rack in there? Bike racks are maybe 10 feet long at most? Can accommodate maybe five or six, seven bikes?
Yeah. The only, the only spot that I can see, and I don't, here's the thing, we don't have authority to give up any parking, because this is a tenant of the building. So this tenant doesn't control the entire site. The landlord would have to, if, if it's, it sounds like you're suggesting to give up a parking space to put in a bike rack.
I'm not suggesting that, but, but and often, I, I don't know what, what they're probably, there's a gentleman raising his hand. He's not the landlord, is he? Oh, he is the landlord?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So, sir, why don't you come forward and introduce yourself and welcome. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you all.
We'll get you a seat. We'll get you a seat.
That's okay. Scott Ravelson, my sons, Ben and Cory Ravelson. We manage two properties, own and manage two properties on Reservoir Street. Parking has been the bane of my maturing existence. We do it pretty well. On Reservoir Street, for example, we have managed 20, 322 Reservoir Street. We were the only tenant, we are the only landlord who have ever had it 100% occupied under Lee Newman's blessings. We balance our tenants. We have Dan School, for example, everyone's ours, and it's in everyone's lease. Very restrictive parking. We manage it, we're hands-on. Anyway, we will find a place for a bike rack on our property and together figure out where it'll be.
Excellent.
How much parking would you like, or would, I don't know how, I, I, I'm not that familiar with bike parking things?
Yeah. I mean, so, so I, I live, work in an office building in Needham myself, and there's a bike rack, and, and, you know, it's young people, for the most part, use it where it's warm. So I think it's a great idea. I think it's consistent with how the town has grown to add the, on Highland Avenue, the bike pass, and more and more people coming. So, plus, you, you, the, the nature of your thing is health and fitness, so it all fits in. So that's good. I appreciate your statements. Let's do this. If we have other people in the audience that want to be heard-
Ooh, can I just-
More, okay.
Okay. We, sometimes I search for words. We have letters, which we are happy to submit emails from each and every one of our other tenants. We did the parking studies. We have photographs of every one of these documented hours that shows the exact number from multiple angles.
Excellent.
We're professionals at what we do. We would not have gotten letters from Michael and Andrew, our tenants at G Medical, who've been in the building 15 years, supporting this, if they were afraid that this use would be taking parking from them. So-
Okay. To be honest with you, sir, that, thank you.
No, but so each and every one of the tenants in writing supported this use, felt very comfortable, and we could make that part of-
That's not necessary. I think the attorney has done a good job to present. I appreciate you're, you're providing some live testimony to support the numbers. I don't think anyone's challenging, but let's hear from the board in a moment. But thank you, sir. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, sir.
A repetition.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just, the bylaw has, does have a, a standard for a number of bikes, and it is one bike for every 20 parking spaces. So for this parking lot at 62 spaces, that would be three point, some small number, which we have to round out, so it would be four bikes would be the requirement.
Four bikes. So that would be one rack?
Right. One, like, a one small rack, not the really long big ones.
Okay. All right. So let's do this. Let's, anyone else would like to be heard on this application, for or against? Okay. Fair enough. Let's, let's hear from the board, then we'll get the comments from, from the town officials.
Can we zoom in?
Yeah. We have one of our board members. Peter is on, on-
Hi, Peter.
But let's just see attendees, if we have any hands raised. We have no hands raised on this issue.
Okay. So Peter, nice to see you. Can you hear us, Peter?
His, his audio is closed.
His audio, and it looks like his visual is closed. Peter, can you hear us? Okay. So he's with us in spirit. Okay. So Nick, you were about to say, so let's hear from the board comments, your thoughts on this.
I had, I've actually gone to Burn for Bring a Friend Day. It's a great program. Really enjoyed it. Unfortunately, with COVID, I couldn't continue, but it's very, very popular. I can attest to the fact it's a great workout. Very popular. Gets, definitely gets busy, and it's like a good thing for your business. Can be tough on parking. So I guess my question is, is there any kind of street parking on Chestnut Street or any other permitted parking in that area that could kind of help to alleviate some of the tension in the parking lot?
So there is some on-street parking in that neighborhood generally. Certainly, at the peak time, the 5:15 a.m. to 7:00, 7:30 a.m., there's a lot of open, you know, open spots. I, I don't want to, you know, say, but like, the Staples parking lot at that hour is completely empty, or near completely empty, right? There's just, and the streets, parking is wide open. Because there's really, that hour of the day, there's not usually anybody pretty much over there.
So it's permitted, so on like the Charles Street, where we'd be facing, there's parking there. You're not in your head, I assume, yes, so? Yes, there's street parking, it's public parking.
Okay. That's a good point. So there's some access to public parking. Okay.
Have we got any permits in this building in the past? I didn't see any in the packet.
I don't. I, I think they may have gone mostly to the planning board, through the planning board.
In my, in my file review, the only one I found was the, was the Pure Performance that went to planning for major project site plan review.
Got it.
And, and they, they did a full, they, when they went in, their, their on-paper parking demand was like 43 spaces, I think, so they did a full-
They used five, according to their needs?
Well, that's, that's, yeah. I mean, so, see, this is the thing, as a little, little footnote, history of this, right? So years ago, Curbs For Women tried to come into town and tried to make the argument that it was personal service, because at the time, you couldn't have gyms pretty much anywhere in town except the industrial area. After a bit of a fight, the bylaw got changed. It was initially that the planning board denied, and then they changed the bylaw to, because they recognized this was a use that should be permitted. They changed the bylaw, but they were really concerned about opening the floodgates and having, you know, 18 different gyms coming in all at once. So one of the ways they controlled that is they said, well, let's set a really strict parking requirement, so we can really control this. We can cherry pick and say, this one is okay, this one is not. Because they didn't want a gym that was going to come in and have like, you know, 100 people just coming in and packing the gym all at once and completely screwing up parking. So they created this, this parking demand of one space for 150 square feet. And as I mentioned at the outset, it's like, it is one of the, if not the most restrictive, most limiting parking demand in the bylaw. And again, so that was partly to control it. So part of the reason with Pure Performance, because they are a really big facility, on paper, they require a tremendous amount of spaces, but they do all their stuff as one-on-one training. So they don't have, you know, they only have, you know, like five trainers. So they don't have like, you know, they don't have 40, they don't have like, you know, 20-plus trainers, to then have 20-plus clients to come in all at once. So that's why they only require a handful of spaces versus what their on-paper demand is. And this is, in fact, part of what the whole waiver mechanism is, is designed for, the actual text of the, the language in the bylaw, right? Talks about how due to unique circumstances, specifically relating to the uses or the lot or whatever, and this is exactly it. These uses on the site, Pure Performance being one of them, the specifics, the unique specifics of how they do their business, they don't require what the on-paper demand is.
How big was your space in Newton?
750 square feet.
So this is bigger than your space in Newton? And how many students, campers, did you have as your capacity in Newton?
I believe we're set around, we average around 30, I would say.
In Newton?
Yes.
So you're expecting to be bigger in this location?
Yes. And just to give us a little more space to spread out with those 30 people.
Does a childcare create complexity? How many children might be there? More personnel to manage them? More cars?
We do have one or two employees late mornings and early afternoons for that, but they're not there in the early mornings.
So in other words, young kids, people may bring their children with them?
Mm-hmm.
That's a great feature. And so how, how many children might you get at any one time?
We have 12 is the limit in Newton, but it would probably depend on whatever our legal capacity is, based on how many are in the gym and how many-
Right. And that may require other supervisory type requirements.
Well, it's not a, it's not a daycare facility, because the parents are on-site the whole time. It's just a separate room.
Right. But I'm sure you'll be sensitive to any, any applicable regs regarding childcare.
Okay. Of course.
All right. Was the Public Health Commissioner aware of the fact that there are also any children in there, George?
I, I don't know. It was in the, in the packet, so.
Got it.
Okay. So the town has weighed in on a couple things. Let's see, we've got the, the landlord has supported this. Thank you. The town building commissioner has no objection. He's noted the, the parking requirements, and so we're no objection. Fire has no objection. Police has no issues. No comment from the Public Works, and no comments from Public Health. So that seems like no, no issues with the town. Okay. So would the board entertain a motion on this? Or, or should we, would we have discussion first?
I think we should have a little bit of a discussion first. Generally speaking, all for the idea. I think you're going to have 45 people in there. I think you're going to have 45 cars in there in a big time. And kudos to you guys for success. The morning, I mean, there's a bunch of fitness facilities going up and down that way, if I'm not mistaken, but I'm sure there's going to be plenty of space there. Bike rack, all for it. I don't think you're ever going to see anybody riding a bike over there, but let's, let's do that. All these bike lanes all over the place. But I just, I guess the part that internally, the prior fitness place that we're replacing did not need a special permit?
Yeah. So I think they went in as a retail use-
And became a fitness use?
And they had as a part of their, it was an accessory, I guess, to their retail stuff. So they sell bikes, and I think they also do stationary bikes. And so they do classes with that. They do spin classes. They do like, you know, how to set up the, the bikes, how to, you know, how to best use them and all that kind of stuff. So I'm not sure. I think they probably went in primarily as a retail with this sort of accessory stuff. Now, if you look at the building plans, it's, it's not entirely, not entirely clear, you know, what all the different rooms are, but you can see the breakout rooms. In fact, the only way I knew that they did these classes is because, you know, when I did my research to see the tenants in the building and how they present themselves publicly, it's like, I found it that way. But I think, it goes back to, I think they went in as retail, which is why I did the parking calculations retail, but quite frankly, you know, it probably should be something different.
Okay. Specifically, since we're going to grant a special permit for indoor athletic or exercise facility, I mean, are you asking for no limitation on bodies? Are you asking for any hour limitations?
As an attorney for the, for applicants, I would be, no limitations at all. Sky's the limit, right? But I think it would be reasonable, we represented that 45 as the maximum, so I think it'd be reasonable to impose the 45 as the-
Okay. You guys have anything else?
Thank you.
Would you like to comment?
I think that sounds reasonable, too, to add that 45 maximum.
Okay. All right. So then the-
So I'll put a motion on the table then.
Thank you.
So I'll put a motion to grant a special permit, person to 3.2.6.2, to allow the space for an indoor athletic or exercise facility with a limitation on the number of clients at any point in time to no more than 45 for the working hours as presented by the applicant. Obviously with the caveat of the Board of Public Health approving whatever they have to approve, if they have to oversee anything to that effect. And to waive any strict adherence to off-street parking or parking design number of spots in accordance with 5115, 512, 513, any other, any other relief necessary to operate the business.
Okay. Would you also add a proviso regarding the bike rack of, have up to four bikes?
I don't think the applicant can technically agree to that, but I think the landlord's word is good enough for me. But if you want me to add the-
I would prefer a proviso.
With the proviso to add a bike rack in accordance, for up to four bicycles.
Perfect, and would you like to add something regarding hours of operation?
I think I noted the hours as designed by the applicant, so five fifteen AM until seven thirty PM during the week, and seven to eleven on Saturdays.
Is that what you're looking for? Okay, good, good, good. All right, is there a second to that?
I have a second motion.
Okay, great, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Congratulations, wish you best.
Best of luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Landlord. George again?
Thank you, good luck.
You guys take it early tonight.
Thank you very much. And he wrote in limits in their parking, so they would be in violation of their lease schedule.
Excellent, thank you, thank you. As well, as well. Okay, so, um, eight o'clock, great. So, the, the third item on the agenda is three twenty-four Chestnut Street, Munson Indian Kitchen.
Monsoon.
Munson Indian Kitchen applies for a special permit to allow the use for a takeout establishment dispensing prepared foods in more than one res, non-residential use on a lot under section three two two, and to waive strict adherence to the number of required parking and parking design waivers as well and other applicable sections for the operation of a takeout Indian restaurant over on Chestnut, three twenty-four Chestnut Street in the Business Zoning District. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
George Janta Junior appearing again this evening on behalf of the applicant, Monsoon Kitchen. And with me is Paramjeet Singh, who's the real person behind the, the application. So, as indicated, this is for three twenty-four Chestnut Street, uh, which is identified as parcel nineteen on assessment map forty-six. It's in the Chestnut Street Business District. The lot is a sort of long, narrow lot that has twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-two square feet of area with a hundred and thirty-nine point six six feet of frontage on Chestnut Street. It's currently occupied by a one-story mixed-use commercial building that contains a number of tenants. Uh, the building is routinely numbered three twenty to three thirty-two Chestnut Street. And it contains ten thousand nine hundred and sixteen square feet of floor area in total. This property that is before you this, this evening is one of the various tenant bays in the building containing one thousand one hundred and seventy-nine square feet of space. It was most recently used and occupied by Home Kitchen, which was also a takeout Indian restaurant. Uh, and in fact, as you hear, this is a basically markedly similar use in terms of how it fits in with the zoning bylaw. Uh, before that, the space was used by Prelude Gifts, which had been in Needham for many years, it was a retail operation that wound down. So, Monsoon Kitchen's been in the restaurant business for quite a while. They first opened up a location in Central Square in Cambridge in nineteen seventy-four, and that restaurant is still open today. So, it's a testament both to their, their savvy and also to the quality of their food, that they are still open. Because as we all know, restaurants don't often last, quite a few of them close within the first year, and then another good number of them close within ten years. Paramjeet, uh, who lives in Needham, wants to bring this success to the town and bring delicious and healthy Indian food to the residents of Needham, to his now hometown. He brings over twenty years' experience and combines both traditional cooking along with new ingredients to come up with some wonderful, flavorful dishes. The restaurant is proposed to be open ten AM to ten PM, seven days a week. But the peak will probably take place in the late afternoon, early evening hours during the weekday, and then, uh, you know, probably midday and afternoon of the weekend. The layout of the space is gonna stay essentially the same as it is currently, uh, basically with the kitchen in the back and a small area in the front. So, by way of recollection, Home Kitchen came before the board in two thousand and nineteen, it was granted special permits for use and parking waivers. Uh, and that layout that Home Kitchen used is essentially the same layout that's gonna be used for Monsoon Kitchen. The, there are a couple of changes, which I'll get into in a minute, but one I'll also note is there are, there's still some equipment left over in the space, and that, to the extent possible, they're gonna try and reuse that. The changes from the layout that Home Kitchen had, there's really only two. There's number one, they're gonna add a beverage refrigerator or a beverage unit in the front area. Uh, Home Kitchen did not have that, they were, they were a unique kind of takeout operation. And then the other aspect is they're proposing to do four to six stools with like a railing bar in the front, so that people who come in to order the takeout can sit while they're waiting, they don't have to just stand around. So, this is a bit like, um, I don't know if any of the board has ever been to Dragon Chef, which is in this same building around the corner. But it's essentially the same kind of thing, they have like a, it's like a counter bar kind of a thing in the front, and from time to time, they have a few stools there.
So, there's no eating?
No, right, it's not, there's no, there's no food service, there's no eating, it's not a dine-in restaurant at all, it's purely takeout. But if you walk in and you order, and then you gotta wait, you know, fifteen minutes for your food, you can, you can sit on a stool while you're waiting. So, that's the idea of the stools. So, other than that, it's the same, same layout that Home Kitchen had. There'll be a maximum of five employees on site at any given time. Basically, a representative, an ownership representative, a manager, a chef, and then two support staff. Over time, once a restaurant gets established, it's, there's a fair chance that ownership might not be there all the time, so it might go down to four. But in any event, it will only be, um, ownership and management that parks on site. The chef and staff will actually be living within walking distance to the location. So, they won't even have a car anywhere near, you know, they won't have a car on site, they won't take up a parking space, they'll walk. And by the way, the, the residence location has already been obtained, so that's already in place.
I'm saying residence location?
So, for the chef and the support staff.
We have rented a place for that.
Oh, I see, okay, so, okay, get it, so that's why they're able to walk to work at it?
Yes.
Yep, yep.
And that's a restriction you would allow within the decision that the staff, other than the two principals, park elsewhere?
Yes. So, the, the use itself is not, not particularly problematic, and it's permitted in the, in the Chestnut Street Business District, and it's compatible with the other uses on the site and in the neighborhood generally. So, really, the, the main issue before the board is parking. So, this use being really, I don't wanna say identical, but substantially similar from a zoning perspective to Home Kitchen, essentially requires the same relief. Home Kitchen closed sometime last year. If they were still open, we might have, this might have been a request to transfer the permit instead. But because they closed and they're now gone, we can't actually do that, so we have to come in with a new request. But essentially, the relief we're requesting is exactly the same as Home Kitchen. From the zoning perspective, the use is exactly the same, it's a takeout operation. So, um, so the main gist of that is, it all comes down to, there's a parking waiver request on the table. As far as the parking waiver, Monsoon Kitchen will require the same number of spaces as Home Kitchen required, which namely is ten. I will mention that there is a little bit of interpretation that goes into that. Under the bylaw, a takeout operation requires ten spaces for the takeout. That's fixed, that's established, that's our ten spaces. The six, I'll call them waiting stools, right? Technically, those are not for dine-in, those aren't for eating, so they really shouldn't generate a parking demand. And in fact, I'll note, you'll see, you have a letter that the billing, the billing commissioner actually agreed on this point. But you can interpret the bylaw to say that it requires spaces, because they're seats where people can sit. I, I would say it doesn't, because then you're actually double counting, because those are people who come in to order takeout, and if you're already counting them in the ten spaces for the takeout, to then count them as they sit and wait for their takeout, you're basically double counting.
Yeah, yeah, but I think also, George, that if, um, uh, that i- if, if more people are waiting and then more people are ordering, you, you've got more cars, I can see how it's, but I, I think it's important to, to give us some guidance, um, about the, the current parking today. And I'd be curious, you know, to, to hear from, from the applicant, uh, you know, as, as to what, it's somewhat not your main, but curious, you know, what, what you're gonna do differently, what happened to the old one, it sounds like a very similar format, Indian takeout. Uh, and what, you see, maybe you can say a few words, introduce yourself again?
Sure, my name is Paramjeet Singh, um, I am resident of South Needham. And we went in business, um, actually, my family's been in the business two years before I was born. And I grew up in the restaurant business. And I moved to Needham, and I see there's a, there's a, uh, there's a need for a healthy, um, affordable, um, Indian food in Needham. Not to say that the current Indian restaurant is not doing a good job, but I think, uh, there's a, there's a need for a, a takeout place. Uh, having said all this, what I have noticed, um, most of the parking spaces that we would need, it would be after five o'clock. During the day, we would not be having much business anyways for lunch crowd. If someone is there to grab a quick bite, uh, it's gonna be, it's not gonna generate any, uh, more traffic. Uh, after five o'clock, from my experience, what I've seen, uh, all three shops are closed. Um, the Animal Hospital is closed after five o'clock, and Delara's Hair Cutting Salon is closed, and also, um, Elizabeth Grady now is something else, those are, all three places are closed. From my experience, what I've seen over the weekend, the parking lot is wild empty, because no one is there.
On the weekends?
Weekends as well, yes.
Well, I've certainly been there at night, it's busy.
And the night is busy? I, from my experience, I've seen it is busy during the daytime. Because all the construction workers, they come and grab things, and then the Animal Hospital is there. And so, um, that has been my experience.
So, is there any, like, the other gentleman in the previous matter had some documentation regarding parking over a period of time, is that, that analysis been done here?
It has been submitted.
Yeah, there, there was a study that was done back when Home Kitchen went in, uh, and we would still stand behind that. But, again, the whole, really, the, the, the key hours for this use, really, the demand is gonna be four thirty, five o'clock on. And, um, and I will tell you, I mean, certainly, my office is diagonally across the street from there. And over the years, I've seen various businesses come and go from that plaza. And that plaza during the day has always been tight. It's always, uh, when I had animals, I lived here in Needham, I used to take my animals to Chestnut Street Animal Hospital. So, I was there in that vicinity a lot to begin with, and then I was specifically in that plaza a fair amount as well. I also, you know, on, on occasions, would get my lunch at Dragon Chef. Uh, and one of the things that I noticed was that with Dragon Chef and with Costas to some degree across the street, right? There are a lot of people who work in that vicinity that will walk to get takeout for lunch. But I, I anecdotally do not see a lot of people driving to any of these locations to get lunch. All right, to get, you know, either dine, either like what Sweet Tomatoes would dine in, I don't see them driving there to dine in during the day. I see them going primarily walking to get takeout. And if you're on Chestnut Street, you know, between like eleven, eleven-thirty and like one o'clock, you see quite a few people walking up and down that section of Chestnut Street. So, I do think that with respect to the parking, that this use will work, just like Home Kitchen worked, because really, the demand during the day, to the extent there is any demand, it's gonna be foot traffic, it's not gonna be cars. It's gonna be people walking there from the hospital or from Chestnut Green, which is directly across from my office and directly next to this plaza, or people in any of the other businesses that are around that area.
There are two things we are also planning to do, is that, um, if someone writes that they are going to just be outside and going to pick up the takeout, we're willing to bring it outside for that.
Okay.
So, that would be very helpful for, uh, working moms and dads who are, has the kids who they've just picked up, and they don't have the time to go inside and stuff, so.
Sure, that's a nice customer combination.
Yep.
So, is the menu different from the previous, your successor?
Yes, the menu is different. Uh, so, menu, um, is, um, North Indian food, which consists of chicken tikka masala, basmati rice, and naan bread, which is very simple and straightforward. Yeah.
Okay, great, great, great. Okay, so, let's, if we may, hear from anyone else who would like to say a few words, either pro or con in the audience, anybody? Oh, okay, how about from the, the deep audience? Hi, Peter, can you hear us?
You have no hands raised.
Okay. And Peter, can you, can you say, can you hear us?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you for participating, we'll make sure that you, we'll, we'll participate in this decision as well, okay. So, let's, let's hear from the board members, your feelings, your comments.
Do you intend to use food service companies as well, like DoorDash and Uber and things to that effect?
Mm-hmm.
And I think I run in here ten AM to ten PM, is that your desire?
The, that is the desire, but we won't be open, uh, until eleven-thirty.
In the morning?
Correct.
That's a full day out there.
Uh, eleven-thirty, yes, yeah, it's written ten, ten o'clock, but I don't expect us to open until eleven-thirty.
But you expect to be open until ten at night?
Nope, around nine, nine-thirty will be done. Nine o'clock will shut down the shop, and then, yeah, for an hour, we'll be doing cleaning.
I'm a nighttime resident in this town, my experience, that parking lot is always empty at night.
It's, yeah, that's been my experience.
I also eat George's later and at times, so anytime I've ever gone to that area.
What time do you go there?
Like, after seven, after seven-thirty.
Because three of the shops are closed after five o'clock. And that's the, uh, hos, uh, Animal Hospital and the Hair Salon is the one that brings most of the cars during the day.
Yeah, I, I've actually moved there today during the day, it was pretty busy, but today was also an early release day, and I think there was just a lot of commotion happening around town.
Wednesday, yep.
Um, but, um, no, I don't have any questions, except maybe, George, can you talk a little bit about that? Something that I saw the commissioner write about, that more than one use on the lot, it being under manufacturing.
Yes, yes, that, that actually, that maybe hesitate a second as well, it's, it's interesting, I actually embrace his perspective. However, I will say, the bylaw has not been interpreted that way in the past. It, it, it's curious how the bylaw lays out more than one non-residential use on a lot. It is kind of within the manufacturing section, but it's still in the table, in the use table. So, it's, it's not, to me, I wouldn't say it's absolutely clear, and I don't know if I would really argue too strongly that that means it doesn't apply to anything but manufacturing uses. And I think that's what he's interpreting as, and I said, I embrace that view, but historically, I've been doing this for over thirty years, and every, like, generally, building, planning, this board have always interpreted that provision as requiring a special permit for more than one non-residential use. So, I, I, you know, I would love to break from that tradition, sure, but I, I don't know that, you know, practice certainly doesn't dictate that.
Uh, Peter, hi, Peter, would you like to comment at all on this?
Nope, I, I have no comments, I, George, I think the building inspector is, is wrong on that point, and if you look at the other use items that are surrounding this one, I think you'll come to the same conclusion. I think you do need the special permit for the more than one use.
Okay, fair, fair enough, thank you, thank you. Okay, uh, so, let me just read, if I may, the comments from town officials. Uh, the building commissioner has no objection, he indicates, uh, uh, about the sparse stools that may not need parking spaces, but he has no objection to this proposal, the police also has no objections. No comment from the Public Works, and, um, the, uh, uh, health, uh, uh, director does have some comments, there are some applications and processes that you need to follow.
I met with him this afternoon.
Okay.
And I addressed his concerns.
All right, about dumpsters as well?
Dumpster concerns, I have addressed with him, and then I gave him the schedule. If we need, we can actually increase the service up to like four days a week.
Okay.
Right now, it's three days.
Okay, so, so that, that, the, the requirements for food and permits is beyond our scope, but clearly, it's something you're aware of and, and you're starting to address, we appreciate that, okay. That being said, um.
And also, there was a, uh, no comment from the planning board.
Okay, well, thank you, all right, so that, that, you see, the, the town is, is, has no objection to this, so that, that's great. All right, so would the board present a motion?
On this or is Peter voting on this?
What's that?
Yeah.
Is Peter gonna vote on this or?
Hi, Peter, would, would you like to participate in this one?
You're mute. Peter, you're muted.
That's on purpose, that's on purpose. Uh, sure, you want me to do a motion?
Yeah, so, thank you.
All right, uh, move that the board issue to Monsoon Indian Kitchen Inc. a special permit pursuant to section three point two point two for a takeout establishment primarily engaged in dispensing of prepared food. A special permit pursuant to section three point two point two for more than one non-residential use on the lot. And a special permit pursuant to section five point one, point one, point five, waiving strict adherence with the number of required off-street parking spaces and a waiver with respect to the design requirements identified in George's memo is set forth in section five point one point three. With some conditions, I guess. Which is where the magic comes in. Going to have.
Just a little bit.
Sure, sure, the hours of operation are, I guess, are gonna be ten to ten, seven days a week. With the maximum of five employees, only two of whom are gonna be permitted to park on site. And, uh, I, I don't know whether you want this to be personal to this applicant or not.
Interesting point. What, what was the, the last decision, was that just in favor of and the required?
Generally, there is, that it's to the applicant, and if there's a transfer, it needs to come before the board for, that's a standard clause that we put in.
Right, right.
For businesses.
Yeah.
So, would you adopt that standard clause, so the, the, the permit's being issued to, to this operator? And appears to be a change, have you come back in front of the board to, for approval and disclosure about who the principals might be? Okay, and that's. Okay, and that's part of the motion, Peter?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm not bothered.
I'll second the motion.
Second the motion. Okay, so for, for purposes of this decision, we have Peter, Nick, and myself. Okay, great. So all those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great, and that passes unanimously, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Look forward to the grand opening.
Thank you, yeah.
So do you have a sense of your timeframe or what you're projecting to open?
So I'll be speaking with the health inspector. I'll be speaking with the health inspector and based on how fast they can work with us, give us a month or so.
Great, excellent, look forward to that.
Thank you, very kind.
Georgia, thank you.
Thank you, nice seeing you.
Okay, item number four. 250 Highland Avenue, the Rainbow Angel, Inc., applying for a special permit for the use of a dine-in restaurant with accessory takeout under Section 35, 3252, and to waive strict adherence to the required parking and design requirements as well to operate a Taiwanese restaurant at the site of 250 Highland Ave., which I believe was the old Mighty Sub.
That's right.
Welcome, nice to see you, nice to see you. George?
Good evening again, members of the board. George Shinta Jr. appearing on behalf of the applicant, Rainbow Angel, and with you is Mrs. Lee, who is the owner proprietor of the restaurant.
You're Mrs. Lee.
So, so the, so again, as indicated, this is for the property at 250 Highland Avenue. This is property that's located at the corner of Highland Avenue and First Avenue, over on the other side of 128. It's in the Highland Commercial 128 Business District. It's shown as parcel 58 on Sheet 300 of the assessors map. The lot contains a whopping 5,541 square feet of area. Small lot, with 86.42 feet of frontage on First Avenue. It has an existing one-story commercial building, which has 1,584 square feet of space in it. So again, small lot, small building. The building was used and occupied for over 30 years for food service use. Initially, it was used by Red's Deli, which I have a very, very distant hazy recollection of from when I was a kid. But from approximately 1989 until, I think, last summer, it was used by Mighty Subs for their, for their business, for their basically takeout and dine-in, sub and pizza kind of, well, they had pizza, but sub restaurant. Red's Deli was a deli and sold cold cuts as well as prepared sandwiches. And in fact, Red's Deli at one point had as many as 74 seats in the space, really jam-packed in. And notably, they had this giant table that had 12 seats on it, and sort of in the middle. When Mighty Subs took it over, they got rid of that table, so they reduced the seating down to, oh, 62 seats. So, you know, both of, so for 30 years, you had a substantial number of seats in that space along with quite a substantial takeout business. I don't know if members of the board ever got subs at Mighty Sub, but they, they certainly did a very robust takeout business with their subs. And certainly towards the end, I mean, I know, I think the week before they closed, there was a line out the door, down the block, and around the building. It was tremendous, so.
It was an institution, George, we're missing.
It was, it was, it was. All right, so since February 2014, Mrs. Lee has been operating a Taiwanese restaurant just around the corner. This is another application where somebody with a business in Newton is looking to move to Needham. We must be doing something right in Needham. So she's been over at 108 Oak Street, which is literally, you go over the bridge into Newton and the lights right there, you make a left and she's just right down the street. So she has successfully run the business there, the Chinese restaurant there. She's even been written up in the Boston Globe, so gotten some good press. But now, for a number of reasons, she would like to move the business to this location. Given the longstanding history of this location for food service use, it seems like a natural fit. Seems like a good location for it. And I will note that had, had sort of facts played out a little bit differently, this is another one that we might not have been coming before the board in this capacity. It might have been some other, might not even been before this board at all. Because if Mighty Subs had still had all their equipment in there, this would have just been a continuation of that use. But after Mighty Subs closed, either Mighty Subs or the landlord have both removed all of Mighty Subs' equipment and fixtures and everything, completely gutted the space and completely redid the space as a vanilla shell. So effectively, cutting off the 30 years of food service history there from a permitting perspective. So we have to come before the board requesting new permits from scratch, essentially. But even with that, it's, given the history and the fact that food service worked there for so many years so well, it does seem like a good spot for food service. So the new restaurant will continue the takeout tradition. And with that, I will note that since COVID, Mrs. Lee has seen the takeout portion of her business jump tremendously. Basically, roughly now it counts for, give or take, 65% of her business. So it's really primarily takeout is what drives the bus. But there is also some dine-in as well. And with that in mind, she is proposing to have some seats at this location. But unlike the, the 62 seats that Mighty Subs had or the 74 seats that Red's had, she's only proposing 20 seats. Much more reasonable, much more manageable, much more in keeping with the scope and size of the building and the limitations of the space. So the restaurant will be open 11 to 9. Right, to start with, it'll be Wednesday to Monday, so Tuesday they'll be closed. But I would ask that the board, if the board's inclined to grant this, to not limit the hours, to basically allow 11 to 9, seven days a week. In the event that in the future, if business does really well, that they, they can open seven days without necessarily having to come back for further review. There will be a maximum of four to five employees on-site at any given time. Mrs. Lee, a chef, and then two to three support staff. The only person that's going to be parking at the site is going to be Mrs. Lee. The chef and the support staff, currently, they all arrive at the restaurant around the corner together, all, all at one, all in one. And that's going to continue at this new location. So they will all come in one car or otherwise make their way to the site without a car. But right now, they come all together basically as a carpool in one car. And for that purpose, Mrs. Lee has reached out and got an agreement from Restaurant Depot that she can park, they can park one vehicle there to support that. So there'll only be one space occupied on-site for the staff.
How many spaces are there on-site?
Well, all right, that's, that's next up on my list here.
That's the $6 million question.
So, so there are only five parking spaces on-site. Remember at the beginning, I mentioned it's just, it's 5,500 square foot property. So there's not a lot of room for spaces, even though the building is quite small. So there are five spaces on-site. One of those will be taken by Mrs. Lee, and then there'll be four spaces available for customers' use. However, given the limited number of spaces, Mrs. Lee has also reached out to the Montessori School, which, although it's technically not the same property and technically not the same building, from a practical standpoint visually, it looks like it is part of the same building. And they have basically agreed that she can use a number of their spaces as long as she does not interfere with their operation or block the, the outside play area that they have in the U kind of between the buildings. So, so I don't know if all of you, I mean, I know the Montessori School's come before the board a number of times. So I expect the board is probably quite familiar with the conditions in the field. But the way it kind of is set up is there's like a U with the building and this is one tip, you know, one of the tips of the U. And the Montessori School basically has all the rest. And inside that bit of the U, there's all parking spaces all throughout. But only five of them are on this property associated with this building. All the rest of them are associated with the Montessori School. I can tell you, so I've been to the site multiple times since Mrs. Lee engaged me and every time I've been there, there's only been a handful of cars parked in any of those spaces. So, which explains why the Montessori School was, was fine with.
So this is a parking arrangement that will be in writing?
It is in writing, and in fact, I have a letter I can actually submit this evening.
And so hours of operation 11 to 9, so this parking would be available during hours of operation?
So the, the Montessori School. There it is. Yes, between 11 and 9.
This is a supplement seminal?
Yes. Thank you. Here can I have one for the record here, of course? Of course. Thank you. There you go.
George, would you address the Montessori School?
I'm not sure what their, their actual addresses.
Or Blackbeard's Wells, they.
Okay, well, this, this is a good letter from the, actually, I can just read it for the records of people in the audience and so I can see. To whom it may concern, this is a statement to show that Needham Montessori School is willing to share their 11 parking spaces in the middle parking lot with, with the applicant, Jean and Lee Kitchen. Is that the applicant?
So that, that's the, the name the restaurant is currently around the corner on Oak Street.
So that's one of the, that's the applicant as, as well as Rainbow Angel, Inc., okay. And that, and that there are some conditions, parking away from exit doors and walkways and the like, and that these areas be kept clean, and that they welcome and look forward to this. Okay, so that's for, how many spaces are we talking about here? This is, how many spaces?
Eleven.
That, oh, sure, there are 11, yes, okay, 11 spaces, okay. So this is an integral part, so, so would you have signage at the restaurant instructing people to park their overflow?
So it's all, if you pull in, you, you don't know that any spaces belong to any tenant necessarily.
Well, Mighty Sub is on the side and there's a sign, there's, I guess, five spaces out front.
Right, but none of, right, at least presently, none of the spaces are marked to designate that, that they're only for a certain tenant. So, so I don't know that I would necessarily, I know the building inspector made a recommendation, the building commissioner made a recommendation about marking the spaces for the five spaces that go with this use, specifically for this use. But I don't know that I would necessarily support that and that maybe the spaces should not be marked.
So George, as I recall, there used to be a golf shop next to it that shared those five spaces. Did I have that wrong?
I don't think they shared those five spaces, but they were on actually the other, the other stretch of the U, if you will. And I think they might have used the spaces sort of opposite the five spaces.
So is that facility still there or something there?
I believe that, I believe it's now gone.
Yeah, it's, it's gone, that's part of the Montessori School now.
Yeah, so, so this, so the, the site plan only shows obviously our property. But these are our five spaces and basically the spaces continue all the way down and then the U kind of is like this.
So the golf store had its own, because in other words, at some point, presumably there'll be another tenant there one day where the golf space used to be.
I believe, I believe it's occupied now.
Isn't the, isn't the school in there now, the Montessori School?
They occupy the entire building now.
Yeah, okay, okay. So that, that, the Montessori expanded into that old golf location. And I know we've, we've, the board has considered the parking and felt reasonably comfortable and it's working and there's been no problems. I just wonder whether by giving up nine spaces from these hours of operation, will it impair the Mighty School with, with their operations and negatively impact that?
I, I would not expect it to, mainly because I think their primary use of the spaces is in the morning. And obviously, the restaurant's not going to start having activity until, you know, 11 o'clock, 11:30 at the earliest. So at that point, you're already past sort of the Montessori School's peak window.
Okay, I mean, it seems like it's, it's a wonderful idea. It's, it's a great concept. It's just the parking and we all want to make it work. And so having the Montessori participate in writing with nine, 11 spaces is very helpful. It's, it's busy there, though we have more lighting, streetlights than before. But you have a lot more people, which perhaps is great for business.
Okay, so, so let me, let me just finish off with, with the parking. So as I indicated, Mrs. Lee is only doing 20 seats. So under the bylaw, the parking demand based on 20 seats, right, is one space for every three seats, requires 6.67 spaces, you round it up to seven. And then unfortunately, the bylaw still has this arbitrary 10 spaces for takeout, which I have never seen a takeout component that actually required 10 spaces. But so then the 10 plus the seven is a total of 17 spaces required. But that overstates because the takeout requiring 10 spaces is well in excess of what you would actually see. And then, and then with the, even though there's the dine-in, that's, that's a, less than half of their business is dine-in. The substantial majority is takeout, so that's really what's going to drive a lot of the business here.
So is there insulated parking elsewhere around there?
There is some on-street parking available down on Cabot Street, which is sort of down around the corner. It's within, it's within walking distance. It's a little awkward, sort of, it's not like readily apparent, but certainly it is there. So there is some on-street parking available as well. Now, and in the front of the building, which I've not really talked about, we can't technically count them as spaces, but there's, if, if you remember back in the day, before the state redid Highland Avenue and before that whole intersection was redone, you would see there was a whole line of cars parked head in, going into Mighty Subs, right? I, I know there's one picture that shows several cars, doesn't quite all go all the way that I remember, but it shows several cars parked in front. When they redid it, they put, they extended curb, so you couldn't just do that anymore. But there's still a little bit of room where I suspect you're going to see one or two people probably pull in and because there's like a loading area and the people will probably pull in and, and park there and then grab and go.
Okay, well, good, thank you, thank you. Now, would you like to say something, either one of you, about your, your restaurant, your, your approach, your style?
She already have a lot of nice customer clients from Needham.
Yes, if you just put, talk with the mic, thank you for participating. Just tell us your name, please.
My name is Weiwei. I'm, yeah, I know she wants to, okay.
Okay.
She's very looking forward to go and have this new location in Needham. And because she already have a lot of clients there and, yeah.
Great, thank, thank you, thank you. Okay. Any people from the audience like to see, I recognize Mr. Billion, please step forward. Former Select, Mr. John Billion, nice to see you.
Nice to, nice to see you all. Good evening. Peter, good to see you.
Good, John.
Hi, Daphne. So I am a, I have been a longtime patron of Jean and Lee's and Mandarin Cuisine and Mighty Sub and all of the restaurants in and throughout that corridor. As somebody who has a business for over 30 years in Newton, Upper Falls area. So, you know, I'm familiar with the location and the, the ability to get to navigate that area. You know, is there parking in Highland, is there traffic on Highland Ave.? Of course there is, okay. But the parking issue, I honestly, you know, I believe that there's a different clientele that existed at Mighty Sub for all the years that I went there. And I think the clientele there drove a different time segment and were, I, I think that you may have had a, a clientele that maybe were possibly less respectful of the parking in and around the area, especially in the back. But I also believe that there is enough parking and especially for the use that Jean is requesting. I think that marking spaces in the back area would be a good thing. I was, you know, talking with the folks from Mandarin earlier and I think that, you know, they're, they're concerned as any business would be. But I think the use for Jean and Lee's is going to be different than that of Mighty Sub. And I think it'll be less intense than that of Mighty Sub. And I think there'll be, and again, I'm a patron of all of the establishments. So, you know, I would say that I support this application. I support a business moving to Needham. I support more taxes being paid to Needham coffers. And in addition to being on the Board of Selectment for years, I'm also on the Board of Assessors. So I understand the elements of the taxes that we would be taking in and the benefits that all Needham residents would have.
So, thank you, Mr. Billion. So you mentioned parking in the front, you're calling the front the side, I, I'd call it the front. And there's currently five spaces marked?
So I would, I would actually call that the, the back, but.
So the entrance, the entrance to get into the restaurant.
So the entrance to Mighty Sub was actually on the opposite side. So the entrance to Mighty Sub was actually on the opposite side of the five spaces.
Really?
However, Mrs. Lee is gonna have her entrance on that side, because it makes sense, because that's where the spaces are.
Okay, and so, Mr. Bullion, you're suggesting that marking the spaces is a good idea?
I think marking the spaces for all of the use in the larger lot where Mandarin Cuisine is would be beneficial to all involved. I think it would clearly delineate the spaces that are for Jean and Lee's. It would delineate the spaces that are for Mandarin. I think it would take away any confusion that may exist, because as you know, I mean, I'm, you know, I do go to Mandarin Cuisine, never have a problem parking. Mighty Sub, Mighty Sub was always a challenge, but I never used the lot in the back. I always came down, down, I think it's, uh, well, by the.
Were you the ones that parked in the street?
No, yes, well, maybe. I would, I would do that if that's true, but that's always the approach I would take, because I always felt, it was the best approach to get to Mighty Sub.
Can I ask a personal, so what is the difference of, of cooking style between Cantonese and the more traditional Mandarin? Cantonese. Taiwanese, I apologize, Taiwanese, Taiwanese, the difference of style very generally.
Cantonese is more like the mild.
Taiwanese food just比较宽，宽式比较多人.
Uh, yeah, Taiwanese is much simpler or.
Light oil, light sauce.
Light oil, healthier.
Light sauce.
Okay, okay. Mr. Bullion, you agree with that?
I agree with that, but I, I. Howard, I am an aficionado, aficionado of food, so, and, uh, and I, I enjoy all different varieties of food, varieties of food, so.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to be heard from the audience? Come on up, thank you, nice to see you, sir, right by the microphone, your name, please?
Thank you. My name is Eric Freeman. I'm the Chief Operating Officer and General Counsel of RK Centers. RK, RK, RK Centers.
Okay.
RK Centers, we own fifty Cabbage Street, the two, two-story office building. We are tenants in that, in that building as well. Uh, we also own two thirty-eight Highland Avenue, which our tenants are Mandarin Cuisine and the Montessori School. I was unaware of the Montessori letter. Um, it's good of them to be, uh, conciliatory and cooperative. Um, we'd have to review that and understand it as the landlord, as to whether or not they have the right to consent to this under their lease, but I, I put that to the side at the moment. I also happen to be a Needham resident.
Well, well, actually, but you, you raised an important point.
Yes.
Does, does the, uh, uh, Montessori have the authority to, to, to write this letter? And you said, is, I understood you correctly, you're part of the ownership of?
We have a landlord for Montessori and for Mandarin Cuisine.
And so, uh, is it your position as, as behalf of the, uh, ownership of, of the real estate that you would consent to these eleven spaces being available for this restaurant?
Not at this time, no. I'm not saying a flat no, we'd have to understand it better.
Right, so that, that poses a little problem, is, is that one hand, we've got a written letter, the other hand, the landlord who rightfully is hearing about it apparently recently, uh, and wants time to review that. And I think parking, it's a great concept, in my opinion, and I want, want to hear from the board. I think parking is the issue, and, and if, if the landlord is, is on the fence here, uh, I, I, it's difficult for, for me personally to vote on it, because it's not clear where these eleven spaces reside.
But I'm also chiving the first.
Sure.
I, I, I think this letter candidly is effectively irrelevant for my decision-making to be blunt with you, because we gave a special permit to the Montessori School, and I think we've done it multiple times, that included a parking waiver, if I'm not mistaken. So I think that if we factor this into our decision-making on the applicant, I don't know, I just feel like we're going against, or altering a prior decision that we made as well. So I'm, I'm, I'm not saying one thing or another, I'm just saying that I'm gonna look at this as the silo itself of this small building with five parking spots, for intensive purposes more than anything else.
Fair enough. And, and how about you, your, your comments?
Yeah, I used to attend Mighty Subs a lot, and I'm familiar with, um, that parking restrictions being tough. Um, I used to have to kind of live park my car, run in, you know, um, run back out, in high school especially. Um, I would say, yeah, I was wondering if there's anything kind of similar to the, the, um, last restaurant application that we just heard about, perhaps considering like a live parking, um, or, or takeout component where maybe there would be a spot designated for, um, the food establishment to, to come, to bring out, um, the food, so that, you know, that people don't have to go in and wait at the counter. Perhaps it would kind of help the flow of traffic. Um, I don't know if that's something that was considered, or you would be open to considering?
I, I think, I think that does make some sense, and I think that would be something that would work. So one of the space would be designated for more rapid pick, for basically pickup only for takeout only.
I think we're going a little bit of a tangent, I'd like to hear Dave Butters' rest of his points.
Sure, um, I, I should mention that we were represented by Council Evans Huber. Evans, people may know, has had some health issues and.
I knew that.
Okay, so he, he led, I, I was in touch with him recently, within the last couple of weeks. Um, he had to withdraw from representation because he has to deal with his health issues. Um, so I subsequently spoke to Roy Kramer to see, but if he had any advice. Um, I know he's not taking new clients at this point. He said, I know Roy, he says, back in a different life, I was a young lawyer at Goodson and stores representing the Franklin W. Hall in College of Engineering, so I sort of knew some of the Needham players. And like I said, I've been in Needham for the last twenty years myself, uh, as a resident. So we have serious concerns about the projects, and they're basically four: traffic, parking, safety, and trespass.
So you have those concerns about this project?
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
We do. Um, the traffic in this location, as I think many people know, is intense. Um, the applicant is gonna be open from eleven to nine. As they may know, Mighty Subs was open from approximately seven to three. Mighty Subs was not open for dinner. The most busy time in that location is probably work rush hour, uh, and we believe that it's going to exacerbate the problem. Um, the parking situation is particularly of concern. Um, Mighty Sub's parking situation was essentially chaos. Um, during lunch, people parked up and down First Avenue on the sidewalks. They parked at two thirty-eight Highland Avenue when they didn't have the right to do so. They parked sometimes in our parking lot at fifty Cabbage Street and cut through. They also sometimes parked on Cabbage Street. Um, regardless, the Mighty Sub's parking situation was inadequate. Um, I note again that Mighty Subs is only open for breakfast and lunch, they're gonna be open for dinner. Um, final, uh, safety, the turn, as, as some of you may know, the turn onto First Avenue is a blind turn. Trucks have a very difficult time making that turn. Um, there was nothing in the application about how they're loading and supplying their, their restaurant, but we note that Mighty Subs often would block traffic when they had to load and unload into their, into their, uh, operation. Um, finally, a lesser concern, but still a concern, is trespass. Um, as often as not, folks would park in our parking lot at fifty Cabbage, as I mentioned. Um, they were also parked at two thirty-eight Highland, and it was a concern of ours then, and we think it'll be a concern of ours now. One other note, you mentioned that they're going to have one parking space dedicated to the owner and manager, which is their prerogative, of course. That takes out twenty percent of the parking spaces. With the school, with the school location next to, uh, the restaurant, um, from our perspective at least, it does raise a concern that it could be a dangerous condition. Um, it seems to be inconsistent with the being, being in harmony with the bylaw, and that the traffic that's generated, um, you know, might, might frankly be a safety issue, uh, and not, uh, promote the convenience and welfare of the inhabitants of the town, but rather put them at risk. Two other points, two other main points. Um, there was an analogy made that the Mighty Sub's use is essentially the, substantially the same use as the proposed use. We disagree. Uh, number one, because the applicant is proposing dinner at a different time. Um, and we also know that the hospital is coming on board in two thousand and twenty-five.
What, what is?
The hospital, okay, down the street in, in, in the, in the, in the business park. The, in addition to that, after the Mighty Subs was approved, you got the hospital, you, uh, you have Universal NBC, TripAdvisor Building, two hotels, Shark Ninja, the former Parametric Site, all were developed post-Mighty Subs. This application, in our view, needs to consider those changed conditions with respect to traffic, uh, that were not in place at the time that Mighty Subs was in place. We don't believe it's substantially similar. Um, that one other point about the application, it concluded that a substantially similar use operated without incidents for many years. I will tell you that there was an incident every day with respect to parking on First Avenue, and I will also tell you, since my office literally oversees that portion of First Avenue, right across from the Alcapocos, or the old Alcapocos, um, I personally saw a number of police stops and some accidents, I didn't see the accident itself, but the result of the accidents, and I bet if you looked at the police records, that would bear out. Our view is that a full-service restaurant in this location is inappropriate. However, um, if we're going to, if you're going to give this consideration, we would ask the board to ask the applicant to consider a traffic study and a parking study, so, so that we could, by professional traffic engineers, so that it can, it can, it can inform the board before it considers granting the request of relief, um, what, what the situation really is. I, I appreciate John Bullion, and I, he was a tremendous advocate for us when we fought Mill Creek. I was on the citizen community when we were fighting Mill Creek, and I consider that a win. I take everything that he said at face value. I think he's fantastic. I don't think he's a traffic engineer. Um, and so my, my view is a traffic study and a parking study like that, uh, would take into full account a fully operational hospital, and all the other, uh, sort of conditions on the ground as they sit in today, and we'd be a much better informed board.
Thank you. So, so you're the landlord, so don't you have to, uh, create a lease in favor of, of this?
We're not the landlord.
It isn't.
Interestingly, we're not. Interestingly enough, we would like to be. We'd like to buy that piece of land, but.
Okay, so I, I, I misunderstood. I thought you were the owner of this building.
No, no, we own the building, we're in a butter. We own the building that houses, uh, Mandarin Cuisine and Montessori School, but the proposed location is actually a standalone subdivision lot.
So how are the buildings U-shaped, and the applicant, the applicant is trying to rent a portion of the tip of the U, and the rest of the U is owned by this gentleman, including the office part behind it?
The problem is helpful to you. I only have one, so.
Oh, sure, 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 we'll share it.
So here's Highland Ave, right? Here's Highland Ave, here's Mandarin, you're coming off of Highland, here, here is Montessori's. You come, you come into, and they talk about the backside of the building, this is where, this is where the new restaurant, this is Mighty Subs, right here. I'm doing this by hand. This is actually a standalone lot, okay? We own all of this. We don't own this. So and the five parking spaces you're talking about on the side of the building, they're not over here on First Avenue, they're over here. Those are the five spaces, I wish I'll take one here, so it's four spaces in the building.
Okay, okay. I, I think you've made some important points. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, uh, from the audience like to say a few words, comments? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm, uh, Alan Douglas, I'm the Director of Needham Montessori School. Um, I had no intentions of overstepping my bounds. Uh, I, I won't apologize if I did. Um, when Mighty Subs was there, we, we worked very well together, and yes, the traffic was horrible. The parking was horrible. Um, it was one of those occasions where we developed a real close relationship with them, just like we have a close relationship with the Mandarin, and yes, we have applied for numerous, um, you know, special permits off the board. Thank you. Um, we have been a very big success. We're doing very well, we're strong, um, but we also work very well with our surrounding, um, you know, businesses around us. And I, and I do miss Mighty Subs. They were, they were a great place. Um, we just worked hand in hand. If they needed a dumpster, they used my dumpster, so. I mean, if they need a parking spot, they used, and I didn't think anything of it. Um, that being said, um, we have created, um, some times during the day that is really busy there. Um, Mandarin Cuisine parking lot at two thirty is not a place to put any extra cars. It, it, you can go by any day you wanna go by there at two thirty, when we're dismissing sixty percent of our, um, tuition-based program, and the Mandarin Cuisine parking lot is full. Um, we have, uh, a great routine worked out with, um, you know, dismissal and drop-off, and also with Mandarin, with her hours, it just works great. I, my, I do have a concern about adding any other traffic to that parking lot. Um, that's why I did not include that in, in my letter, that we could allow them to park in there. I wouldn't, I would never even think of that. Um, the other side that we're talking about is the U is at two thirty. Two thirty, two to two thirty is when we have our drop-offs, uh, our pickups happening in the afternoon. Uh, the morning is non, it's irrelevant. They're, they're not even open. Um, so I, I would stress, uh, that U shape at two thirty is, is definitely going to be the high point of, um, congestion in, in that U shape for us, and, and so I just wanted to specify that, um, as far as the disposal times.
So let me understand, so you're with the Montessori School, correct?
Yes, sir.
And somebody, you're the director that signed this letter?
Yes, sir.
And so this letter is authorizing the sharing of eleven parking spaces in the middle parking lot of your, of this, from eleven to nine? But you're just telling us from two to two thirty is a major problem?
It is a major, yes, yes. Did I not put that on there, sir?
Uh, I'm not quickly seeing it, but, but, okay, okay, so listen, I, I think that you're saying that, uh, uh, suggesting that parking is a problem at that restaurant, and from two to two thirty, you guys are really busy.
Yes, sir.
And don't want any more traffic.
Uh, definitely not in the Mandarin Cuisine restaurant. I, I would encourage anybody to stop by and see the Mandarin Cuisine restaurant at two thirty. Um, is, is a lot of people there.
So eating at the Mandarin at two thirty?
Uh, with, uh, Mandarin's, um, early afternoon in our dismissal at two and two thirty from the school, um, yes. There's a lot of traffic that comes through there.
Thank you.
All right.
I appreciate you coming forward, thank you. Anyone in the, uh, on the video have a comment? Okay, one more, thank you.
I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, and there's more, I'm sorry, I didn't realize, more comments in the audience. Please come forward, please come forward with the microphone, and you introduce yourself.
My name is Joan. I'm owner of Mandarin Cuisine, yes. Uh, don't get me wrong, we love.
Your last name, please?
Low, L-O-W. And then, um, the traffic problem with Mighty Sub is happened already, and then especially when snow day, and then we are the last, uh, ex, uh, left turn to the parking lot from Highland Avenue, so all the traffic actually is just stopped in front of Mandarin Cuisine to go to Mighty Subs. Um, we know, we know ID for a long time, so don't get me wrong, we love them, and then we try to work out with them, and then, uh, but it was a problem anyway, but all these years, especially when snow day, when the line, uh, parking line is not that clear, the cars just park everywhere and blocking the entrance and go to Mighty Subs. So I'm sure that if this open, gonna be happen again, because people cloud, uh, the customer from Newton, they all come from, uh, this side, it's the last left turn on our parking lot. Everybody just come into Mandarin Cuisine parking lot instead of go over the other side.
So, so you, you're, you're, your concern is about parking?
Yes.
Parking is too congested?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, uh, folks wanna say a few words pro or con? Okay, uh, why don't we just hear from the board, and then I'll read the comments? Well, actually, wait, let me read the comments first, uh, please. Okay, so that, um. This is from the landlord. Sorry. So the town, uh, building had, um, agrees with the applicant's analysis regarding the zoning. If successful, I would recommend a condition that permanent signage be installed at the head of each of the five outside parking spaces, limiting their use exclusively to the establishment, and he had commented about the other waivers and the like. The, uh, the food, uh, health director certainly has applications for food service that they want you to be familiar with and to comply with. No comment from the town, the building department, of, of the public works, and no comment from the fire department. Um, so those are the comments. Uh, let's hear from the board.
Was there a comment from the police department? I'm sorry.
I didn't see it.
I didn't see it, I did either.
Let me see.
And I didn't see the zoning.
They did not submit.
Got it.
And I didn't see what the planning board had to say either.
The planning board also, um, had no comment. The planning board's comments came in today. The planning board's comments came in today, and they're in your blue folder.
Okay. Okay. So the planning board has no comment. All right. So let's get some comments if we could from, from this board in the fever as well. Who would like to say a few words?
I had more of a clarification about the parking at the, on the weekends? Maybe for, it, it seems like it's very congested already between the existing uses of Montessori. In the letter, it says that you would support the shared parking on Monday and Friday. Is it just less of a problem on Saturday and Sunday? You're not open Saturday, Sunday, so.
So they can't really hear them. They can't really hear them. So you want to ask them some questions or?
Yeah, I guess my, my question is just.
Or directed to the, these folks?
Maybe a follow-up to the presenters about the weekend parking situation, if you could talk about that. Maybe come up to the mic.
Yes, we have this Saturday and Sunday night dinner. So back then with Mighty Sub, we deal with, they have early club, morning and lunch. I only deal with lunch. Right now, if they're open the same hour with me, then I have to deal with both lunch and dinner. So even Saturday and Sunday night, like last Sunday night, I have four parking lot. They can, they know that. They can even come in, Ellen. So what if their customer park in my space?
So you're saying on Saturday night that your lot's busy with your customers?
Dinner, dinner, yes. And Sunday night dinner. So how they gonna make sure their customer don't park in our parking lot?
Okay. Was that clear from this letter, they even have the right to do it?
Yeah, that's.
In that you have the right. So parking is an issue? Okay, thank you, thank you.
So I'll, I'll chime in for a second. I appreciate all the comments from the butters and everything else. My biggest, I mean, at the end of the day, as landowners and as tenants next door, you have the complete right to enforce your parking however you see fit. So I appreciate the comments on the public safety. I'm not a public safety expert in any way, shape, or form. I'm looking at this simply as a 20-seat restaurant that does take up with five parking spots. I'm not even taking into account in my analysis the parking there and how, remember, the Mandarin Parking Lot is a separate parking lot. And we have the U, and we're on the other side of the U with effectively a driveway or shared driveway or easement or something to that effect with some Montessori parking here, some Montessori, and then five spots here. If my memory's correct, I think the Montessori School even has some people that use Restaurant Depot for staff and things to that effect anyways. So off the cuff, the notion of four spots for a 20-seat restaurant doesn't bode well with me. So I'm all for businesses, but I think the applicant should find a place at a minimum to park her, her own vehicle somewhere off of there. Because 25, I also think I'm the only human that might have never eaten at Mighty Subs. So I can't speak for any of that, but I'm just.
This is a lot about you.
Well, I'm not going to say anything. I understand the practical concern, being the last left to come in to the bigger parking lot. But, I mean, I don't think they have any right to park in that parking lot. And I think tenants, landlords have total right to enforce, you know, like anything else, somebody parking in my driveway or anything else. I have some trepidations about five parking spots for a 20-seat restaurant. I have a lot of trepidations for four parking spots for a 20-seat restaurant. And, you know, with respect to practical uses and actual uses, I also take into consideration the building inspectors' comment that parking should be clearly delineated. These spots are only there. I have less of a safety concern than maybe I should, but I think the police department would have a bind if there was a safety issue at hand. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you, thank you. And Mr. Peter, Peter Berg.
Well, a couple of things. First.
Peter, nice to meet you. It's not a great transmission.
Okay. In the, in the Board of Health comments, she says that you need to have two full-size dumpsters to serve the restaurant. And I don't know where those would go, but if they're going to go in a parking spot, you're going to lose more parking. So I'm not even sure there would be four parking spaces available here. I, I think, I don't think that there is a need for a traffic study. I think that's overkill. I don't think it's a bad idea to get a parking study. I mean, we're, we're hearing a lot of anecdotal information back and forth, and it sounds like parking varies quite a bit depending upon the day of the week and the time of day. So I think it might be helpful to get a parking study. Frankly, I, I don't remember the Montessori School decisions that well. I, I wish that I had them in front of me, but it concerns me a little bit to have this type of high-volume in-and-out use in the same area where you have the school pick up and drop off, even though the, the hours might be different. You do also have the play area there. So I would want to see what parking waiver we gave the Montessori School and see if we're just overloading this parking area between that and this. And the last thing is, I think that in the past, we have seen either formal or informal reports from the police department in terms of the past incident history at the location. In following up on what the representative of our case said, perhaps we should see if in fact there have been a, a history of, you know, traffic incidents here at the corner of First Ave. Again, I don't think we need a traffic study for a 20-seat restaurant. And we all know that the trafficking is, traffic is bad and it's going to get worse. But I think a parking study would be a good idea, taking into account all of the factors that we've been hearing.
Peter, thank you for your comments. I'm just, I'm just trying to get it straight in my own mind, the difference between a parking and a traffic study. Traffic is busy, so the study would say that.
Right.
How, how do you, why would you eliminate the need for a traffic study?
Because we all know there's a lot of cars, and there's nothing that these folks can really do about alleviating the traffic condition. It's not like they can, can make any physical changes. And, and we know that they'll out a bunch of cars. So I don't think that we need a traffic study. I think it, it's more a question of will the parking work? Is there a way in which the parking can be made to work?
Fair enough. I, I certainly agree with that. I think it's a great idea. I think that, that you're presenting this well as, as a restaurant concept. But it's overwhelming from everybody that there's a, parking is an issue. There's been suggestions that this, the area's been built up significantly since Mighty Sub was there. And we all have Mighty, you know, we all love Mighty Sub, but, but matter was a traffic, a parking nightmare. So it seems to me a, a, as a suggestion that, that you do get, that we seek to continue this, if you'd be willing to do that, allow the applicant to get a parking study. I certainly agree with, with Nick about because of the tightness to remove 20% of parking per owner, it does not make sense because you're up against extremely tight situation. I believe parking should be designated. The question is, is it got to work? And I think that's important to you as well, because if people want to go there but can't get there, then, then you won't succeed as a business. And so an interesting suggestion about a designated spot for the customer coming out and you, you exchange the food, that's pretty common. McDonald's has it, you know, all, all places have it now. So it's more perhaps cost to you, but it's a way to deal with very congested parking. So that, that's what I'm thinking. So George, would, would your client assent to a?
What is this shaded part on the survey?
So that shaded, that's the, essentially the dumpster area.
How would you get a dumpster? Where is this for the dumpster?
Yeah, so you see the, you see the five spaces, and then at the top of the five spaces, you can actually see there's a dumpster there already.
Okay. So is that an undersized dumpster?
Yeah, that looks like it maybe, that looks like a half size.
Yeah, so listen, I think restaurants are going to need a dumpster. Because they're.
Yeah. And I will say, just on the dumpster, just on the dumpster issue, you know, I know I've had a few different restaurants recently with the Board of Health, and the language in their letter is their boilerplate standard. They've issued that, that lang, that exact same language to every restaurant. And I can tell you, certainly one restaurant, they could not accommodate two full-size dumpsters, but the Board of Health was fine with them doing two half-size dumpsters, and they just had to basically have them emptied more frequently. So at the end of the day, you have to do sufficient dumpsters to satisfy the Board of Health. But that's.
May that be too.
But it may not necessarily be two full-size. It could be two half-size. Or, but you do need two. You definitely need two dumpsters under the new requirements.
I mean, just a comment, George, I'm not a surveyor in any way, shape, or form, or a parking engineer, but, I mean, you have over 70 feet of building. I, I just think that five par, I mean, from whatever that might be.
And I think, there was a pole in there.
Were you saying that? Oh, yeah, there used to be like a pole that.
There is a pole in there, yeah.
I remember hitting ones, yeah.
And I think, yeah, I mean, it's possible we might be able to squeeze one more space in there.
That's just my.
Maybe.
My initial.
Tandem parking?
No, not tandem. But I think, I think you have, I think there's more, there could be more parking than five there. Four, that's worth.
Yeah.
So if, if a month apart would allow you, the applicant, to, to, to rework the parking somewhat? So if I could jump in, I, I think that people are, seem to be enthusiastic about the, the food concept. But there's been strong concern for parking or lack of parking that, that might end up in a negative vote tonight. And so this is a chance to postpone for a month or so to take a closer look at parking, and, and you might be able to squeeze an extra space, eliminate the owner's space, have a dedicated space for, for pickup, and, and along with a parking study that might support this, I think would, would make a lot of sense.
And potentially solidify an agreement with another butter, another area, something to that effect.
Okay.
All right. So how do we do this effectively?
So continuing till the December meeting?
Wait, wait, is it 18th? 19th, 19th? Okay. Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate the presentation. I think, appreciate the comments from the audience. Thank you all.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. George, I'd like to say goodnight, but we have one more case.
Yes, I know.
All right. That being, oh, actually, you know what? We have two cases. So why don't we do this? There is a request for the 815, 30, it's 378 Manning Street to withdraw this. So I'll take you out of order if that is the request.
Yeah, I'm done on that.
Okay. Is there somebody here for 378 Manning Street?
No, they sent a letter. That, that's all we had was a, a letter requesting.
Withdraw.
A withdrawal.
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice.
Okay. Is there a second to that? Is that second to that motion? All in favor, say aye.
We would need, we would need Peter to.
Yeah, Peter's got a lot of that.
Be Peter involved in it.
Okay.
You have a conflict of interest.
Okay. So one of you have a conflict?
I do.
Oh, okay, fair enough. Okay, good. Peter, how are you? You're a critical player tonight. We, we second the motion to withdraw the application of 378 Manning Street without prejudice?
Absolutely.
Okay. And we second that? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So the application to withdraw without prejudice, the application of 378 Manning Street is allowed. George, nice to see you. And this is the last and final matter tonight. It's regarding 695 Highland Avenue. And the applicant, D E I, good evening, sir, is seeking a planned substitution, alteration, or removal of conditions to provide relief to the variance that was dated back in October of 1969 and to waive strict adherence to the number of parking and design requirements and all related matters, so that the Dedham Savings Bank might move into this location. And that was the old location, I believe, where the Santander Bank was. Okay, good evening, gentlemen.
That's right. Save the best for last. All right. George Chitche Jr. appearing on behalf of the applicant. I've got a whole team here this evening. I will go through everybody, but I'll ask if, is they each speak? They can introduce themselves. All right. So as indicated, this is for the property at 695 Highland Avenue. It's at the corner of Highland Avenue and Webster Street. It's parcel 14 on Sheet 77 of the assessor's map. And notwithstanding the fact that it's occupied by a bank building, it's in the general residence zoning district. The property is 15,688 square feet with over 81 feet of frontage on Highland Avenue, over 166 feet of frontage on Webster Street, and over 92 feet of frontage on Putnam Street. So it's got streets on three sides. The property is currently accessed via Putnam Street and Webster Street. I'm not sure if any of you have ever done any banking there, but it's a little bit of an unusual setup. The property is occupied by an existing one-story building that contains 2,208 square feet of space. With that, there's also a drive-up ATM on the backside, or what I would call the backside of the building, is the Putnam Street side of the building. The building itself, as well as its use for bank purposes, was authorized person to a variance that was issued in 1969. That variance was issued to Mary W. Mack and, named from the past, Needham National Bank. It's, the, the building has been used for multiple banks since then. Most recently was Santander, before that it was Sovereign, and I think before that it was something else. So over the years, it's been a number of different banks. And in addition to the variance decision that approved the construction of the building and the use of the property for bank purposes, there's also another approval on record that, that was issued in 2007 that was issued to Sovereign Bank in connection with certain facade and design modifications they did to the building. Basically, a bunch of aesthetic kind of changes. No change to the, to the, really to the substantive use of the parking or any of that. So, so the building, basically, since it was first constructed in 1970, has been used for bank purposes, probably will always be used for bank purposes. But currently, Dedham Savings Bank would like to occupy the building and use it for a second Needham branch for their operation. So as a part of what they want to do, they want to do, make some changes to improve the appearance, clean up the site, make it a little bit better for traffic flow, a little bit safer. Basically, overall, just improve the site from top to bottom. So, so as a part of that, there's a number of things that they are proposing to do. One is to demolish and rebuild the drive-up canopy on the rear or Putnam Street side. Basically, they want to take down the canopy entirely and reconstruct it with a new canopy. The new canopy is slightly larger. It's, I think, it's like a foot and a half or two feet larger than the existing canopy, but it is set back 20 feet from Putnam Street and therefore conforms with dimensional and density requirements. It does not increase the use. It's simply providing a better, more stable canopy, basically replacing the canopy that's already there.
So I'm sorry, George. This is a canopy and overhang to allow people to do banking through the car?
Yes, yes. So, so the bank, so the building, the building has historically had drive-up banking. Back in the day, there was an actual teller window on the site, on the backside of the building. And then there was a, one of those, probably pneumatic machines, I think. That was taken out at some point. I don't know exactly when, but that was gone, that's been gone for a long time. And then the window at some point was replaced with an ATM machine. So that what used to be an actual teller window, you know, the old school teller windows, got replaced. Now it's just a standard.
So you're just extending the canopy.
Right. So the canopy goes over those. And so this canopy would be replaced. And the new one is just slightly, goes out from the building, set like less than two feet long. All right. In addition, there will be, and this is probably the most significant part.
So canopy doesn't affect the setback? It's not a building?
It comply, well, complies with the setback. So it doesn't.
So it doesn't go into the setback area?
Exactly, exactly. So the canopy itself is fully compliant with all the dimensional and density requirements. So the canopy itself is fully compliant with all the dimensional and density requirements. Uh, and as I said, it doesn't expand the footprint of the building, so it doesn't actually alter the use. Uh, so the, the most probably significant change, sort of from an external perspective, is the addition of new landscaping. So there's sort of, uh, I would say four rough components, right? The first one is on the, if you're coming in from Putnam Street on the back, right? Coming in from Putnam Street, along the left side of the property, there is some, um, several sort of scrub bushes and a bit of not particularly attractive vegetation that goes along that side. That's all coming out, and that's going to be replaced with just sort of a gravel bed. Then, where the canopy is being reconstructed, on the Putnam Street side, between the canopy and the line of Putnam Street is going to be a new, completely new, brand-new landscaping bed. This will significantly improve the appearance, it will also define the limit of Putnam Street. Because right now, you can't really tell, where's the, you know, where's the property end? Where's Putnam Street begin, and it's a little bit of a mishmash. And I have to say, this is, you know, part of the, it's just an odd, bad flow, bad traffic flow, kind of just, everything's everywhere. So this will clearly define, here's Putnam Street, here's the entryway to the bank, here's the exit to the bank, and it basically will improve traffic flow tremendously, and will make it look a thousand times better. Then, in addition, uh, there's going to be the, the existing landscaping out in the front, near the corner of Highland and Webster, that's going to be pulled out and new landscaping put in, as well as two new trees, uh, one sort of on the, if you're looking at it from Highland Avenue now, on the, sort of towards the right end of the property, the right side of the property, and then right near the corner, there's a cluster of landscaping, including a new tree that's going to go in there. All right, so, one, two, three. And then fourth is, there's some other little bits of landscaping inside the sort of parking area that are going to be added, again, that will really, I mean, right now, it's basically almost all asphalt. You know, it's, it's not the most attractive site. And this will substantially improve the overall appearance of the site, soften it up a bit, and really make it, uh, a more modern and sort of contemporary-looking site. All right, uh, so, that's the landscaping piece. In addition to this, or in connection with this, we're also going to reconfigure some of the parking area. And the two most notable aspects of that is, the driveway that is on the left side if you enter from Putnam. So again, if you kind of came off of Webster, up Putnam, and you turn to come in, that left-side driveway, right now, has a number of parking spaces. Those are going to be taken out, is in connection with the, the landscaping that's going to be put in, and, um, and the modifications there. And then in the front of the building, a handicap space is going to be added, a van-accessible handicap space, which obviously is always a good thing to add in, step forward. All right, so those, and then the building itself is going to have a number of aesthetic changes to it. Um, and all of this has gone before the Design Review Board, they've already, they've reviewed it, and they've given it their seal of approval, their thumbs up. Uh, in fact, noting that this is a, a very good step forward. Now, normally, uh, if this were a normal commercial situation, we wouldn't be before the board for any of these things, well, maybe for the parking, but that would be about it. Uh, but because this use and this building was originally authorized by a variance, any changes to the site require additional review. We also have two very interesting wrinkles in this situation. Uh, number one, uh, when the board issued its variance in nineteen sixty-nine, it imposed several different conditions. One of those conditions, condition number five, specifically prohibited transfer of the permit. It basically said the permit, the variance, was only to be used by the applicant and Needham National Bank. Now, whether that was appropriate or not at the time, in nineteen seventy-five, the variance statute was changed, specifically prohibit any restriction or prohibition on the transfer or the, the usability of variances. Basically made it clear that by law, all variances run with the land. As a result, that condition is now contrary to law, it's an unlawful provision. Um, and probably was overlooked when, uh, Santander Bank went in and did their modifications. But in any event, that should be removed to bring the permitting on the site in compliance with the applicable law. In addition, it should be removed because Dedham Savings is clearly, even though it's still a bank, and even though they're using the same building, the same purpose, there, there are new bank coming in and taking it over. So we're asking for that to be removed. Then, there's another condition, uh, which is, which was, uh, condition number four, that parking facilities for at least seventeen cars be provided. There are seventeen parking spaces on-site currently. In connection with the changes that we're proposing to the layout of the parking area and the addition of the landscaping, we are proposing to eliminate three of those parking spaces for a net result of fourteen parking spaces on-site. Because that's less than the seventeen, we need either a change of that condition to drop it down to fourteen, or for it to be removed entirely. I would argue that it should be removed entirely, because, number one, when that condition was imposed in nineteen sixty-nine, there were no off-street parking requirements at all in the bylaw. It was completely silent as to off-street parking. We now have very clear off-street parking requirements in the bylaw, and, by the way, applying those requirements to this building at twenty-two hundred and eight square feet, you wind up with a total requirement of eight parking spaces. So the seventeen spaces that were required in nineteen sixty-nine are more than double the number of spaces that are actually required under the bylaw today.
So, 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 George, that, I mean, to interrupt you, but this is relevant. So that, that your analysis of parking requirements today for a bank is, is eight spaces, what did you say?
Yes, yes, so the by, the bylaw for bank, for a bank, and the table of uses in section five point one point two requires one parking space for every three hundred square feet.
So what happens if, if the, this restriction all runs with the land, and we have a, uh, fast-food restaurant that comes in there one day?
So, first off, a fast-food restaurant cannot go in there.
But the, the, the point only is that if the use changes, so bank use is a relatively, apparently, low, low-intensity use, what if one day, uh, because it's now going to run with the land, that it's, it's a greater intensity? But I, I see a little conflict there.
So, in a normal ca- situation, I would agree with you. But because this is a use variance, any new use, anything other than a bank, would have to come into the board and would have to, would have to ask for and obtain a brand-new use variance from scratch. We all know how, how, uh, how often the board grants use variances. Uh, I don't know that one has been granted in the last forty, forty-five, fifty years? So, uh, you know, I don't expect that anybody will be able to come in and ask for a use variance. But certainly if they did, and if the board was inclined to grant it, then the board could impose any number of conditions based upon the actual use that was proposed. So, um, I do understand the concern, but unlike a lot of situations where uses can kind of morph over time, this one isn't. This is a extremely strictly controlled use on this site. It can basically only be used for bank, that's it. Anything else, or, anything else has to either be compliant with the general residence district, which basically means single-family or two-family, or would have to come back to this board for a brand-new use variance, would have to show that it meets the requirements, shape-of-lot, soil conditions, topography, uh, unique str- unique factor relating to the building, and, and a substantial hardship. So, it, with, with all respect, I, I just don't think that you're going to get any change. I think this is going to either be a bank building forever, or it's going to become a residential use, or the zoning's going to change, and if the zoning changes, then, you know, it's, who knows what the zoning might allow? You know, maybe a number of things. In all those situations, there are a number of different controls with respect to spaces. However, I would submit that it would be appropriate, maybe, to, to change the condition instead of calling out a specific number, to simply say that the parking must comply with the number of spaces required under the bylaw. So, in this case, we're pro- actually proposing fourteen spaces at the end of the day. Eight are required, we are well in it, we're almost, almost twice. I mean, right now, there's more than twice there, and we're almost twice. So there's certainly, you know, ample, and we comply with the bylaw as far as number of spaces go. So I think it would be appropriate to either, you know, for me, best case is to just remove the condition entirely. Next best case would be to change it to say that it must comply with the number of spaces, you know, per the bylaw. Or, or, you know, or obtain a waiver. But I, again, I, I think, given that the bylaw has the requirement now, which did not exist in nineteen sixty-nine? Nineteen sixty-nine, you put up this bank building under the bylaw, you could only have, you know, if this were in a business district, you could have had no parking, you could have had one space, you could have had three spaces. There, there was nothing in the bylaw to say how many spaces you needed, or that you even needed spaces. But in the mid-nineteen eighties, that all changed. First, they started with the, with the provision that said you had to provide off-street parking generally, and then they started building in all the different requirements in terms of how many cars, and then how the parking areas were supposed to be laid out. So now, we have this full regulatory framework that just didn't exist in nineteen sixty-nine. So I think that, that that requirement therefore should be taken away. Another aspect of this is, you know, I looked at this, I said, why in the world did they do seventeen spaces? It makes no sense. But then if you go and you actually read the decision closely, the very beginning of the decision, they reference a, a, a proposed colonial-style two-story building. So I think also one of the factors was, at the time, in nineteen sixty-nine, it was contemplated that they were going to have a two-story building, so a larger building would warrant more parking. They wound up building only a one-story building, that's what we now have, that's what it's now limited to. So the seventeen, I think, was an estimation based on the original version. Uh, but then that got changed for a number of reasons, not the least being there was some back and forth in the process, you can read it in the decision, and the plans were required to be revised to satisfy comments of the planning board. So, um, so in any event, the seventeen is clearly, clearly inapplicable today. And whether it be changed to be compliant, require compliance with the bylaw, or just taken out entirely, I think that this, that condition should be modified or removed. So, uh, what we're proposing is really nothing for substantive change to the use. It is only a change to the site to make it more attractive, to make it flow better, to make it safer, to improve its, uh, its sort of effect on the neighborhood, uh, to basically lift everything up, right? We're not changing the use, we're not expanding the use, so we're within the framework, the four corners of that original nineteen sixty-nine variance. The work we're proposing is fully compliant with all, all dimensional and density aspects of the bylaw. It's been reviewed and approved by Design Review Board. They even commented that the reconfiguration of the canopy area and the change in flow there is probably, is probably about the best you can get to improve that area. So, with all that in mind, I think it's entirely appropriate for the board to approve what's been requested and to eliminate or modify the two conditions in the nineteen sixty-nine variance.
Thank you, George. Let's see if there's anyone in the audience who'd like to say anything, we've got some banker friends?
I, I would, we sent it, and-
So why don't you come out, introduce yourself on the microphone for the folks listening, uh, by the zoom, wherever you feel most comfortable.
Uh, my name is Dr. Kevin Domingos. I'm the Clinical Director of Boston Neuropsychological Services and a trustee of the neighboring building, uh, in part of Hillcrest Condo Association, uh, which-
You're a trustee of the condo across the street?
Yeah, yeah, right next door, at a pot's, right.
Yes, yes, okay.
Um, so I just wanted to shed some light on some additional issues to consider and to think about. First off, we would welcome Dedham Bank, uh, and actually would probably consider, uh, visiting and, and looking into that as well as a business, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Sure. Um, I would also, uh, propose, uh, to have additional conversations to see if we can share resources. Um, I noticed on your proposal, there used to be a dumpster on the property, but on the documents that you had, I didn't see a dumpster, and I didn't know if you proposed to have one or not. But, I would propose, we have one, and we could share that, uh, in exchange for maybe sharing some parking space. Uh, because that would take up a parking spot, potentially, because that's where it used to be, um, on that property. So that's the first. Um, parking is a premium in that location. I don't know if you've spent any time, uh, right across the street, Temple Beth Shalom is there. Uh, we've been in communication with them, sometimes after hours or on weekends, we allow them to use our parking, um, structure as well. Um, other tenants, um, there's, right next to us as well, is Simon &amp; Sons, where they have postings, "Your vehicle will be towed if you park here." Um, and they have towed, uh, many cars. Um, actually, they've towed cars, um, uh, parking between Just Salad and their building, and they don't even own that property, if you look at, um, I don't know if you wanted to see?
Sure.
So, here is, uh, the bank, here's Highland Ave. Highland Ave, uh, the bank is here, uh, this is our building, Simon &amp; Sons, and Just Salad.
Oh, are you the building, it, it has two poles?
Yeah, it looks like it's on stilts.
There you go, okay, okay, that's you, got it, okay.
Uh, so this is, uh, six eighty-seven Highland. Um, so, part of the problem is Putnam Street. Uh, if you look at the property lines, uh, when they built this home, uh, they built into-
Can you guys see this?
I can tell you see.
I can, I mean, um-
Do you want to move it more in the middle?
Sure.
Okay, sweet, thank you.
So Highland Avenue is here. This is, um, the bank property now. This is the, uh, drive, drive-up canopy that's going to be removed, and a larger one, but here, and then there's going to be some sort of planting or a berm that goes into here. The problem is, it squeezes Putnam, trucks come through here as well, and it, it wouldn't be as bad if this home did not build into Putnam Street, as you can see, or these condos. They put a fence, basically, up to ten feet into Putnam Street, and they shouldn't have. So maybe this was overlooked at the time of building? But it poses a huge issue and a problem for Putnam Street, especially now that we're trying to propose something that goes into Putnam Street, because it's just squeezed here.
The berm that they're talking about, the landscaping?
Yeah, potentially. Um, so there's another small berm here that they're proposing to remove, uh, that we share. Um, I would, and this is where their dumpster used to be. This is our dumpster here that we can share. So, um, they can have access to this dumpster, which is ours, and we'd be happy to pay for it. That, that's not an issue. Parking is a premium. My proposal is, instead of taking out this berm and just graveling it, if you put parking this way, um, you could literally get twelve spots versus the six that are there, but the six are going to be turned into less than six, based on the proposal. So, it's, if you just tweak things a little bit, we can add parking, which would help everybody, um, if you just change maybe the orientation a little bit. And we'd be happy to help pay for, uh, the asphalt that needs to go down as well.
So, so I, I appreciate your concern. You, you're saying that you're generally in support of it, but you're looking for cooperation? Now, have you had, had the chance to talk to the good banking people here?
We have not.
Okay.
We welcome our conversation at, at a future point in time, absolutely, of course.
I just want to make sure I understand, so you're proposing to use some of the parking on their land?
Um, there is a shared, here's my contact information. This berm is actually shared between the, the two buildings. There's a, a planting here. Um, in fact, we, uh, we have our landscapers go through and tend to this landscaping here as well.
I just want to make sure.
There, it's hard to see, but this is landscaping.
I understand, yeah, I've seen, I've seen-
Show a little bit where you can-
So, what you're, the way that vehicle is positioned-
On our property.
That's a vehicle on your property?
Correct.
Is it in tandem with another vehicle in front of it?
No.
So how is that vehicle entering in there without crossing their land?
Um, because, uh, this building is on stilts, and so you come in through like that.
I understand, so that's the front of the vehicles, that way?
This is the front of the vehicle, yeah.
Thank you, all right. The boat, you, none, none of your parking is crossing over into this park, into this property?
No.
Okay, but you're suggesting some type of a cooperation where, because parking is difficult there, to use some of their land?
Um, to possibly not have signs that say you're going to be towed if you park here.
Got it.
Uh, that would be nice. That would be nice.
Okay, so, so what you're, you're proposing, and I appreciate the ingenuity here, is, seems like an alteration of what's being presented tonight. And, and that's fine, believe me, it would, it's, 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 so, but it almost feels like you, you folks should be speaking separately outside of this room, to come up with something hopefully that's mutually beneficial.
Possibly. I think that that may be helpful. A couple of other things.
But that requires the banking organization to say yes to that.
Why don't we hear what the rest of those comments are?
Sure, sure. So, part of the proposal also is to do some plantings, and we're in favor of that. However, if you plant some of these deciduous trees nearby in the wintertime, when leaves fall, it's going to, leaves go everywhere. And I, it would come on our property as well, and we'd have the responsibility to have snow removal with extra leaves now. So it may be an extra cost for us because of the leaves that come over, based on the plantings. So that's a concern. Is there going to be a height restriction of the planting or the trees by the canopy? I'm not sure, but that would be interesting. We would definitely not want an obstructed view of Putnam, because vehicles go all the way through Putnam as well. So that would be interesting to have a discussion, and at least understand what that might look like. And again, the property line of the, the housing behind us, or north of Putnam, should be addressed as well, because it does impact the building next to Putnam, because right now, it's squeezed, and it shouldn't be squeezed if they built where they were supposed to be built.
Okay, so, so that issue about parking, it sounds maybe like a public works issue, but I don't believe it's in our jurisdiction. But anyhow, so Nick, I, it's getting a bit late here, and that, it sounds like you've got more to go.
Yeah.
But, so what I'm inquiring about, George, as well here, is, is, it's unfortunate you hadn't spoken earlier, but the, the good neighbor seems to be seeking some joint arrangement that would modify this, this, your plan.
So, so a couple of things. And I'm not sure even where to begin. So, so number one, with respect to altering the parking arrangement and sharing the parking, quite frankly, I don't think that that's appropriate for this hearing. Certainly, open, you know, if the parties want to have discussions, and they come to an agreement, and they want to do something, then that certainly could come back before the board, and they can do that. But that is, that requires a whole level of, of thought and analysis beyond sort of what's before the board this evening. I mean, you're talking about essentially really granting licenses and crossemans, and that's a whole other thing. That's, that's really outside the scope of what's being requested here this evening.
Please be.
Sure.
Thank you. First name Eric Seastead, I work with DEI Incorporated, we're working with and in tandem, Dedham Savings. We've put together the site plan, as well as we'll be doing the construction of the building itself. What we're looking to do is, we're looking to improve the aesthetic appearance of this building. We're going to return the ingress on Putnam Street as originally approved, back in 1970, if I'm not mistaken, is that correct?
69, yeah.
69, correct. Which is going to improve the traffic, the flow, and improve the entire area based on the traffic light and the configuration. The parking spaces that we've allocated are going to remain. We're not, we're not at liberty today to change that. I would certainly welcome a conversation with you in the future, that we might have some capability of parking or other, but I don't think that's really something that we're going to be able to discuss this evening, because we've engineered this site, the floor plan and the structure, exactly as it's been presented to the board. So we're not looking for any changes or adjustments.
Fair enough, okay. Okay, I do think that, that the good neighbor has a concern regarding height limits on the plantings, trees.
And all the plantings that we will be introducing will not have an excessive height restriction, where they will not exceed what you're looking to do. And all that has been presented to the board as well.
So, so just walk us through that, that, the landscape plan, that, that level of detail. I, I must have missed it. George, what plans you're looking at? LS1?
So it's sheet LS-1.0.
And thank you, so, okay. So, okay, walk us through the, the height limits here of landscape.
All right, so what we're looking at here, and you're going to have to forgive me, your eyes might be a little bit better than mine.
Oh.
I would love so.
Thank you.
That might make it a little easier.
That's going to make it a little easier, correct. So, all plant material will conform to the sizes given in the plant schedule, and again, I'm just going from the general planting notes on the left-hand side, one all the way through 17. And again, it's, they shall nursery grown in accordance with the American Standards for Nursery Stock, latest edition prepared by the American Association of Nursery. All of the plants that, again, that we are proposing will not exceed any height or shade. They're not going to have any challenge based on, not only the aesthetic, but the water, again, based on impervious face as well. So if you, I can go through and read each of these for the board, that would.
Well, I guess, it's, it's getting a bit late here, after 10. So, I, I mean to rush, but in other words, the fine gentleman seems to suggest height. So what does it, tell us about height restrictions?
Well, so I will, I'll point out, so the concern appears to be primarily on the Putnam side of things, right? So the landscape island on the Putnam Street side, if you look at the, the island there and the designations which match up with the chart to the right, you will see that basically that is all, all lower, sort of shrubs and yews.
And ornamental grass.
The only two trees we're talking about are the ones in the front quarter, right?
Exactly.
No, no, but having done a little gardening myself, I'm an avid gardener, shrubs get to be seven, eight feet if you don't trim them.
So, so the tallest one there is, looks like the service berry at five to six feet.
And we will have landscaping that will be maintaining hold?
So, so that the height limit of the plants will be five feet?
I think that's in the front.
Yeah, so, so just to be clear, so I can get a six, a six-feet limit, is that what we're saying here? That, that they'll be trimmed back to six feet?
Oh, I'm sorry.
The shrubs have a gallon notation?
That's this, that's the size of them when they get delivered.
But I think that, I can't imagine.
No, 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 so, so what we're talking about is a restriction, so, you know, proviso that, that in light of the neighbor's concern, that these don't exceed a certain height. And so gallons and so on are just, it starts, that's when they're a baby. At some point, they're going to grow.
Right.
And they have to be maintained. So the idea is to keep it below a certain height limit. Five feet seems to be an appropriate limit, by just inquiring.
You're talking about for the landscape island in the back there?
The height, height of the shrubs.
I think that works. We're in agreement with that, absolutely. Five feet would certainly be in agreement.
So, if you're in a vehicle, your eyesight is going to be below five feet. And the, if there's a five-feet hindrance, and there's vehicles coming on Putnam that you're not going to be able to see, because your eye level going through the, you know, window.
Is closer to three or four feet.
It's a concern.
But there's no.
Because there's traffic that goes up and down Putnam Street, then there's the hindrance, and then there's.
So Nick, how are you feeling about this? The, the good neighbor is expressing some safety concerns about height.
I think this is a hideous-looking building as it exists right now.
It's a what?
I think it's a hideous-looking building.
It's going to be fabulous when we finish with it. Everyone is going to love this, and it's going to provide convenience for all who need them.
You know, I, I, I just want to say, I personally support it. I think your designs, the modifications are appropriate. I think we're honing in on landscape.
Yeah, I think getting into the granular of the ask, right? The, the ask is to continue, is to, is to transfer to a new operator, which is the same. And according to the code, they only need whatever George said, eight parking spots. They're going to have way more than that. So I, I mean, I'm, absent any other discussions, any of the other comments, I mean, this, all seems to be aesthetic in nature. The Design Review Board is fine with it. I think for the task at hand.
But you have an abutter who seems to be.
They could also put up a six-foot fence if they wanted to, along the property line.
No, but I think at some point when we're altering, this is my opinion, and so it's a subject that people have different opinions, I'm, I'm hearing a, you know, the congestion in the back with Putnam, the perhaps intrusive use of a neighbor, there's a concern for safety and eyesight visual, and if it can be sustained with an agreement to maintain trees at a certain level, I think we, my opinion, we come to an appropriate compromise.
I can live with that.
Okay. So are we comfortable with four feet as far as the shrubs on Putnam? Is that a healthy compromise?
Well, I, there, there's a number of issues, so, for example.
No, no, okay, one second. So, so what I don't want is just an ongoing dialogue.
Right.
And, and so, so the suggestion might be to, to break and allow these people to talk offline.
Yeah.
If, if, if you're receptive to that, to, to continue this for a month.
No, I, I'd recommend, I'll let George jump in here.
Okay.
Yeah, so, based on what I've heard so far, and based on what I've seen from the email that was submitted, I would actually resist continuing for a month. Because, so, number one, I think we can easily put something into address height and visibility with respect to landscaping on the Putnam Street side. That's easily done. With respect to the, the comments about Putnam Street and intrusion into Putnam Street, I would be shocked and surprised if the property across the street actually went into Putnam Street. I suspect, and having done, having previously represented the gentleman who owned the house that used to be there, having represented the developer that did the three houses at the back, having represented Just Salad, having represented a bunch of people in that area, I suspect that Putnam Street, back not that long ago, was actually like barely paved. It was more of a gravel road than an actual paved road. And I would not be surprised if what, to the naked eye, to the lay eye, appears to be Putnam Street, some of that was probably the private property of the, the properties on either side. So it may appear that they've gone into it, but they probably have not. And so.
If you look at the document that has property lines drawn on it.
Okay, wait, one second. I'm going to, I'm going to hold you. Let's, let's, let the applicant and his lawyer continue. So I appreciate, we're not trying to have an ongoing dialogue here.
That's okay.
So we're trying to get to the resolution.
So, so, I mean, I can't say definitively guarantee a hundred, you know, a thousand percent that they didn't go in, but I would be surprised.
It's, it's beyond the scope of, of our board and our authority to deal with that.
And beyond that, two things. One, I will just make a comment that the, the aerial view is only so reliable. I mean, I've had, any of you that have dealt with real estate, real estate law, and have dealt with these type of things, you know, you've probably seen it. I know I've seen it a few times. Aerial things that show structures over the line, you know, up against the line, and it turns out they're like 10 feet away from the line. They are only good to a degree. They are not accurate, they're not based on a survey, they're not based on any firm data. So, so it's only a hint of an idea. Now, beyond that, as shown on the plans that were submitted, none of the work that we are doing is in Putnam Street. It is all entirely contained within our property. So there is no intrusion into Putnam Street that's occurring. We stipulate to that, I mean, we can't do that anyways, but we stipulate to that, you know, you can put it as a condition however you want to see fit, but it's just a non-issue. So, so, so a lot of this, you know, a lot of these aspects are non-issues, and I would not want to continue for a month to work through things that are not legitimate issues for the application that's before you this evening. As I mentioned previously, I'm always for communication. I mean, I think it's always good for neighbors to communicate. That's being neighborly. But what's before you this evening is a very discreet completed package for aesthetic changes, you know, nothing that is outside the bounds, nothing that's changing the use, nothing that is fundamentally altering anything. These are, these are sort of incremental minor changes to improve the site. And, and I really would not want to continue for another month.
Fair, fair enough. I, I agree with you about the, 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 probably not, and there should not be a need to continue. I do think the changes also affect landscaping, and that's why I think the gentleman should. All right. So that being said, in light of the hour as well, we've entertained all the comments. There's no more comments from anybody else, the board. Anyone else like to say a few words on the board?
Good. Maybe Peter, he's been silent.
I, I, I agree with George. I, I think that we should move forward on this. I frankly, I don't understand the concern, because the way I look at the site plan, no one's exiting this site and turning right onto Putnam Street. So I don't understand how people coming out of the abutter's building are going to have a site issue. There's not anyone that they need to be watching for. So I, I, I think it's a non-issue. I think we ought to just move forward with the request.
Fair, fair enough. All right, so we've got to hold, so we're now in the point where we're deliberating, so we've got to hold off on questions, sir?
No, last comment.
Okay, last comment.
Dumpster. Is there a proposed dumpster on the property?
George, there are proposed.
There is not.
None?
There used to be, so I just didn't know. The bank's not going to have a dumpster? I don't know what they're going to be doing with.
That, that, this site plan, there is no dumpster being proposed.
Okay.
All right, so we're in the deliberative state now. We were talking among ourselves. Are we in a position to, to make a motion? If so, who would like to make the motion? Actually, we should determine who's voting here. Would you like to be on the voting panel?
We have Peter.
So stick with Peter? Okay, so Peter, you'll be on this voting panel, and you won't be in this. Okay. Peter, would you make a motion on this matter?
Sure. I move that we approve a plan substitution with respect to the variance date of October 14, 1969, in favor of the plans that have been submitted with this application, and further that we modify the 1969 variance in two respects. Number one, we modify provision, I might need help with the number. One, on the ownership, George. Number five, yeah, with that we modify condition number five to read that this variance is granted for use of the property solely as a bank. And number two, that we modify what I guess must be provision number four, so as, to require simply that the number of re, of parking spaces provided comply with the applicable provisions of the zoning bylaw. I guess we also need to issue a special permit pursuant to Section 5115, waiving strict adherence with the off-street parking design requirements. And I, I am open to amendments, but that's as far as I get.
Would you entertain amendment to keep the shrubs four feet or below along the Putnam Street?
Sure. I mean, I, I, I think you can do that. I think you can say that they'll be maintained so as not to obstruct visibility of Putnam Street from the abutting property, however you want to do it.
So I'm having a little difficult time. Can you just repeat that? I might agree with you, but I just want to get some clarity on the words.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm saying we can either say four feet. Frankly, I think they're going to be delivered taller than that. I think they're going to be delivered, be delivered five feet tall. We can simply say that the shrubs will be maintained so as not to obstruct visibility of Putnam Street from the abutting property.
Okay, I like that. Okay, good, good, good. Okay, are the board members?
I'll second the motion.
Second the motion, okay. I second the motion. So, okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. So congratulations, congratulations. I think we were trying to be sensitive to the sightline visibility, and I think we.
I'd certainly welcome a conversation at a future time, absolutely. Of course I would. We want to be good neighbors. Yeah, of course.
Good for business across the board. This gentleman has come in good faith to, to work through some issues. Thank you all very much. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, so moved, okay. Thank you, good night. Thank you everyone for working late.
Good night, Peter.
Good night, guys. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
We appreciate your time.